For May 29, 2018. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember DeGree.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Butterlos.
Here.
Mayor Keener.
Here.
And now we'll have the salute to the flag led by Sue DeGree.
With allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We didn't have a closed session. And what's that?
They're asking me if there's a. Somebody's playing. Usual.
Okay, moving on. We have a special presentation from 511.org. And that's presented by Rachel Zach and Gabrielle Brazil.
Yeah, can you just talk closer?
Yeah.
You can.
No, you've got to speak into the mic.
No, it doesn't sound like it's on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's on.
There you go.
Okay, for reference, Lorenzo. When it says off on my microphone, that's on.
All right. Thank you for inviting us here today. We were actually sort of invited here too by commute.org, so I want to say thanks to them as well. I'm Rachel Zach. I'm the deputy project manager of the 501 Carpool Program. The 501 Carpool Program is a project of MTC. We are a congestion management program with the sole purpose of helping neighbors find one another and share their commute to reduce congestion on the freeways. Before we get started, I want to say that we love an engaged audience. We want to encourage an engaged audience, but if we could hold questions till the end, that'll be helpful for Gabby, our marketing coordinator, to just get through some of the really interesting bits. So, a little bit about the program history is that 501 Carpool originally housed a large database of 60,000 people across the Bay Area, had their origin and destination information. And we would go out to employers, bring that information back in and type it into the database. And then they were able to communicate to each other through phone calls or emails if they matched. Around 2015, things started to shift, and I like to call what was 1.0 carpooling became 2.0 carpooling. And we were able to get a lot of the gains from GPS technology. And so a lot of private market providers came on the scene and offered ride-matching services that had, they were GPS-enabled, so you could navigate to the person who needed to pick you up. There were instant communications or are instant communications between you and the person that you're picking up. There's integrated fare payment. And one of the most exciting things, I think, for people in Pacifica is that there's integrated incentives. So there's a lot of really great reasons to be carpooling right now, and you're in a county that has put a lot of time and energy into creating incentives for you to share your ride with neighbors. So I'm going to let Gabby walk you through sort of the apps that are our partners in the 501 Carpool Program and the apps that we think would really help people in Pacifica share their rides.
Hi, all. Am I speaking closely enough? Thank you guys for having us. I'll just quickly introduce myself. My name is Gabby Brazil and the marketing specialist on the 501 Carpool Program. As Rachel alluded to, I will go ahead and go into who our app partners are. So since 2016, the 501 Carpool Program has been partnering with ride-match apps that make carpooling easy, and it's a solution that we present to the public for easy carpooling and creating communities and networks around carpooling. We're currently partnered with Scoop and Ways Carpool. So Scoop is available to riders and drivers, and it's really designed for people who have regular traditional work commutes, like a morning commute and evening commute. Scoop's convenience is that you schedule your ride in advance, and you also get confirmation shortly after you have submitted your ride request. Ways Carpool is ideal, is designed specifically for riders. It allows the flexibility of scheduling your ride ahead of time, similar to Scoop, or doing it more on the fly, say you need a carpool within an hour. They offer that option. One of the main differences between how Scoop and Ways create community around carpoolers is that Scoop specifically gets a bank of all rides needed for a morning and evening commutes, and their algorithm actually does the matching for you. So you can see in the graphics below kind of an example of how Scoop will match for you and find the ideal match based on your destination, whereas Ways Carpool gives the user control over who they would like to ride with. So the multiple faces you see are your option to kind of filter through your matches and decide on the person that you're most comfortable riding with. As Rachel mentioned, one of the key reasons that we launched into these partnerships is to have integrated incentives. So I'll walk through the incentives kind of based on who's providing the incentive locally. So 501 SFA is the regional nine-county Bay Area commute authority. And so we are offering through Scoop a free ride to riders. For drivers, the incentive surfaces as a bonus credit in their Scoop account. San Mateo County and CCAG are offering Scoop passengers a $2 discount for each trip to or from San Mateo County. So for riders, that looks like a $2 discount off of your trip. For drivers, it's a $2 credit in your Scoop account. And finally, BART is offering the incentive of guaranteed reserved BART parking before 10:00 a.m. at local stations. So it's current, the program is launched at Daly City and at Colma Station. The idea is people who carpool specifically through Scoop are granted a special permit and allowed permit parking in the BART parking lot, which kind of saves the hassle of that morning rush to the BART parking to make sure you get a space. So speaking of Scoop to BART, which is the incentive program that BART, Scoop, and 501 are partnered on, this is a video to kind of walk you through what that process looks like in practice for someone who is carpooling to a BART station using Scoop and taking advantage of the guaranteed parking. You might recognize some familiar faces in this video. If I can get technology to work with us today, you might see a video. Give us just a second.
It's okay if you can't get the video to play. We can act it out.
That'd be more fun.
So this was a video that my outreach staff and I created when we started the Carpool to BART program. I'm just going to get into it for a second. I think it helps to tell the story of the original station opening to get a sense for how valuable this can be to people. So this program opened up at Dublin Pleasanton Station where there is a parking waitlist of 10,000 people. It's pretty nuts. And we were trying to help BART figure out a way to increase, to develop a flexible way to increase parking at their station while still allowing for some carpool validation. And so they asked us for some help, and we went to one of our carpool partners, and we figured out that Scoop's app, which matches you, sends the matches to you the night before you go, would be a great solution because they could also send the license plate information to BART. So what this looks like to the user now is that they're involved with the Carpool to BART program. They sign up with a promo code, and they're emailed, they put the address in of the BART station, and then they're emailed a permit. That permit goes on their dashboard, and the BART parking enforcement are able to look at their tablets and see if that license plate is on their tablet or not to be able to do the enforcement side of it. The program's incredibly popular, and it allows people to get a little bit extra time in the morning to come in later. There was a big rush for people to get there before the lot closed, so it really changed people's mornings and also allowed for greater throughput at the station. That's now available in the stations around Pacifica, which is one of the reasons why we're here to say, if you've been rushing to BART in the morning, this is another way to get there. We see a huge user base of these apps, being people who formerly took a rideshare app. They're much cheaper. There's lots of incentives in these programs. They also reduce VMT, or vehicle miles traveled. So it's another way to get to and from that first last mile. I guess here it's more like 13 miles to the station, so.
So as we kind of transition from talking about Scoop into talking about our other app partnership, which is with Ways Carpool, I wanted to take the opportunity to mention that what we've heard from our user base is that often people actually have downloaded and used both apps. And it gives the opportunity for you to match with even more users and create a community within each app to find the ride that you need at the time that you need it. To that point, so I'll move on to Ways. So the Ways incentive is a free ride anywhere in the Bay Area. Again, Ways Carpool is specifically for riders. There is a Ways app, like just the word Ways, that you guys might be familiar with. People have used it in the past before it kind of evolved as just a navigation tool. The Ways app supports drivers who are carpooling. The Ways Carpool app supports riders who are carpooling. So if you already have, for people who already have the original Ways app, it's very easy to communicate between the two apps in the event that you want to be a rider instead of a driver. So now that we've kind of talked through the incentives, we did a few outlines on how to actually use the app. So from the point of downloading the app and using the promo code to get your free ride or your bonus credit, something specific I want to mention about Scoop is that rides are scheduled, must be scheduled through Scoop. So if you are taking a commute in the morning for work, you need to submit that request for a ride at 9:00 p.m. the night prior, and you'll get confirmation within 15 minutes of who your match is and when they'll be there to pick you up the following morning. Similar practice for evening commutes. So evening commutes must be submitted by the afternoon of, and shortly thereafter, within 15 minutes, you'll have confirmation of who your evening ride match is. For Ways Carpool, similar process. I mentioned before that you have the option to schedule. You also have the option to kind of take a carpool on the fly. It's the same promo code for the free ride for a passenger. And the graphics below just kind of walk you through how to actually enter the promo I should tell you what the promo code is. So the promo code is offered through 511, the 501 Carpool Program. And it actually not only allows you to get the incentive, but it also helps us understand carpooling behavior better and understand how people use the app and how people use carpooling as a mode of transportation over time. So as I'm talking through the apps, I'm sure some of you might have been wondering, like, what happens if I'm normally, I normally find a match, and I've been carpooling like normal, and one day comes along where my ride got canceled for whatever reason. Let's say your driver cancels on you, they had something come up, right? So luckily, San Mateo County and CCAG offer a guaranteed ride home service. And so it's really in place to get you a safe ride home in the event that an unexpected cancellation comes up for you. The way that it works is that if you need to pay for an unexpected mode of transportation home, San Mateo County will reimburse you for the cost of that ride. So you should never, you would never be stranded, if that's a comfort. So moving into the final slide, which is resources. I know I've talked, I've touched on a couple of different things, and we've crossed the board between 501 is a regional authority and more local authorities like commute.org and CCAG that are offering incentives. So the carpool.511.org is really intended to educate people who are specifically interested in carpooling as their mode of transportation. We have an awesome new tool on that website, which is Live Chat, so people can easily just go to the website and ask any question that they want. They will get an automatic response from a real person. On the other end, that will kind of help them plan out their commute, learn more about their ride-match apps, and understand the perks that are local to them. 511.org is the larger regional authority, and there you can find more information on the ride-match apps, more information on the Scoop to BART program as well. And 501 also offers like kind of our old-school process of matching carpoolers, which is people just submit their origin and destination information, and we reply with an email with a list of matches of people that you can match with, so it's also another option. Commute.org as well offers the same ride-match, organic ride-match process, and is also a great place to find out more about the $2 Scoop incentive and the guaranteed ride home service. So I wanted to take the opportunity to share with you some of the local efforts that 501 has been behind here in Pacifica. So we recently launched a campaign, a regional campaign, and Pacifica was one of the cities that we definitely wanted to do outreach in and bring into the fold of what 501 offers. And so we've been, and we will continue to be present through the next few months at the Pacifica Farmers Market. You might have also seen or will be seeing door hangers in some of your local neighborhoods, like Lindemar. You'll be seeing postcards out and about, as well as we do outreach events at various popular locations here in Pacifica. So we're really excited to be bringing you guys these resources and helping to educate the community on different modes of transportation that work for their commute. So that's all I have for you guys. I would love to hear any questions that you have for me.
Thank you. Mike O'Neil.
So I saw you had parking preferences for Daly City and Colma, like a large percentage of people here in Pacifica, Gilead and Fos, and, you know, Facebook and Google. Is there any sort of idea to move this to Caltrain, which would be the primary thing down there? And then especially for Gilead, the last mile down there at Gilead?
That's a great question. So I worked with Caltrain a little bit, and there's definitely interest. I think the issue at this point is whether there's appetite on the app side to roll out another station. They're really focused on their core growth. And so Carpool to BART, we got in just at the time that that was appealing to them. And right now, it's, it remains to be seen if that's something. There is also real big differences in the way that parking is enforced in Caltrain versus BART, so it's not just like an easy transition one to the other. I will say that Caltrain was looking at performance at Daly City Station to determine if they will consider this as a method for increased parking. I'm not familiar with efforts for Gilead, but there, one of the reasons why we were adamant about doing outreach in Pacifica is that there are a lot of other cities that are taking advantage of the $2 incentive, where we've seen a lot more uptake in some of these apps. And we do see that this city with a lot of cross-county traffic could really be taking more advantage of the offerings, which is why we focused our presentation on incentives
Deirdre Martin.
That was a great presentation, very informative. Thank you. I'm really, really excited that you're here giving this presentation. And that was going to be one of my first questions was, what does your marketing campaign consist of? So I like all your ideas, and I'm going to suggest a few more. This community has a pretty big online presence, so Nextdoor would be, I've seen a Scoop advertise there, but I think through your programs, some marketing and advertising on there would be very helpful. I know on Facebook you can also run ad campaigns, so I would recommend that as well, this is a big Facebook community. And then Instagram, too, you get the younger crowd. So do you have any statistics on the usage in Pacifica? I know a couple Scoop drivers, but not a lot.
Yeah, so actually, I didn't come with any statistics prepared, but we did meet a bunch of or two very enthusiastic Scoop drivers here in our early research. And they also mentioned that there were a ton of people on the app, which was kind of what we needed to know. Commute.org is looking at the data really closely, and they're the ones who encourage us to come here, and we'll have any information that you need on that.
Yeah, so I probably know those two Scoop drivers. And the Pacifica Climate Committee also has been a very big proponent of trying to push this, so I would also encourage you to connect with them. And if they're doing any presentations, that they would probably have you.
Yeah, great point. So that's actually who we met with originally, where we met our Scoop drivers. And we are actually trying to come up with a joint event. They are going to do a bicycle ride, and we'd like to be at the finish to sort of have an endorsed meet and greet and walkthrough of the app, so that is something that we're considering pulling off together.
That's awesome.
Yeah, they're amazing.
I'm sorry. Did I jump you?
No, your Climate Action Committee, they're very enthusiastic.
Yeah. Okay, great. And then the last thing was for the San Mateo County reimbursement, is there, is it an easy online tool that they can just submit sort of an expense report?
Yeah, I actually, I've never submitted for San Mateo personally, but yeah, it's not complicated, and all the instructions are right on their website, commute.org's website, as well as question and answers for any sort of situation around like when it applies and when it doesn't.
Great. Awesome. Well, thanks for your presentation. I appreciate it. Look forward to seeing more.
Yeah, great.
Okay, thank you, Deirdre. Sue DeGree.
Yes, thank you. I really liked the focus. I'm very happy about that. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. So first of all, about Deirdre's question about how pervasive this is in Pacifica right now, it's not very pervasive. Pacifica has one of the lowest rates in the county so far. And so your presence here and your efforts to market Scoop and Ways, it's just really terrific because our, one of our primary difficulties in commuting, for those that commute to San Francisco, is getting to BART. And, you know, we can't take the bus, or we can, but it'll take us an extra half an hour at least. So Scoop is, should be the way to go. And so we welcome you to Pacifica, and we hope that your efforts will bear fruit.
Thank you. Yeah, I think often for the Carpool Program, we're put in situations where there isn't a lot of market uptake, and we're asked to make it happen. And that's kind of what we're good at. We're good at seeing the assets that your community has here in Pacifica. It's a strong, tight-knit community where a lot of people know each other, a lot of people are headed the same direction. And if we can just get people onto the applications, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of potential. And as Gabby referenced, getting on both is going to be really important because we see a lot of people using them not only to match with one person, but to add another person in the car. And in Pacifica, you have the opportunity, people live close together. It's not too much of a burden to drop two people off, so.
Sue Vatalas.
I just wanted to say thank you, too. And the more people that learn about it, I think the more people will use Scoop. And I think it's a great, a great system. Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah.
Sorry. We had a progress seminar back in April, and we met the director of development for Scoop, and I did have a sidebar with him about trying to promote Scoop in Pacifica. And he was more than willing to talk to us. I have not reached back out, but if that's something that I would be able to assist with, or if you want to let him know that we met him, do that, too.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the consent calendar, and I think we'll have to poll items five, eight, and nine. So, and if there are any others, speak now. No?
I move we approve the consent calendar, except items five, eight, and nine.
I'm sorry, six, eight, and nine.
Oh, six, eight, and nine.
I don't know if I said that right, but that's it. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Please vote. This is to approve the ones that aren't polled. And that passes five to zero. Okay. And on number eight, I think we can just have a vote. Basically, Sue voted against the ordinance originally, and so let's just, if I could have a motion on item eight.
I move that we approve item eight.
Second?
Second.
I have a question, because I forget. So I want to give my reason for no. Do I do it before the vote or after the vote?
Before.
Okay. So my reason for the no, as I stated, was from the existing general plan, page 12, particularly the second paragraph, which I don't think we are paying much attention to, which regards the assets of the city and the character and the essential qualities, and that's on page 12 of the existing general plan.
Okay. And now we can vote. And that passes four to one, and with Sue DeGree voting no. Item number six, so. Item number six, so, hello, Van. I just wanted to get a little more detail about the amendment, number one, to the agreement between the city and Four Leaf, because it's rather large. It's, you know, $600 and some thousand versus a, an original amount of about $950,000. So, could you explain a little bit more about why we need the extra amount?
Good evening, Orville Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Van Ocampo, Director of Public Works and City Engineer. Along with me is Louis Sun, our Deputy Director for Wastewater. So, the amendment, number one, to the contract between the city and Four Leaf, after we brought Four Leaf as our consultant to manage the project, you know, from the time that we said we're going to proceed with it. So, they've been shepherding the project through, from the time we said we're going to do it, through the environmental process and all the way through construction and completion of the project. Along the way, there were a lot of additional work that were done by Four Leaf in order to push the project forward, including the processing of amendment. You know, if you ever recall, the council did an amendment for the secret document for this particular project. In addition to that, there were a number of meetings that were not, that were not included in the original scope of work that necessitated Four Leaf to spend more time for the project itself. In addition to that, when you are doing a very complex project like the one that we have, you know, it does take a lot of time, especially when you have a contractor that is very challenging with regards to managing and plus a schedule that's very tight. So, those are the reasons why we have, or we have a change order request for you. And then, in addition to that, I just want to say that there's also the additional inspector that we think is needed, and that's, you know, during the, you know, the time that we're going to be constructing the work within the local streets, which is Asa, Balboa, and all this stuff. Yeah. So, instead of the inspector going from the incubation and out, you know, we want to make sure that there's a, an inspector out there because of the sensitive nature of, you know, access to private properties during the course of the construction.
Okay. So, it, it sounds like, at least, well, the inspector is one thing, and probably the other best reason I heard is that the contractor is, dealing with the contractor is somewhat challenging.
It's challenging, given the complexity of the project itself.
Yeah.
There are a lot of requests for change orders that are reviewed prior to us, and we fight those change orders to reduce them to what is fair for both the city and contractor.
And, and Four Leaf is involved in that, I take it?
That is correct. They are our-
Working for us.
For the city, yes.
Yeah.
They're the managers for the project itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, John. Can I, did you mention that it's, we're still within the budget?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
That is, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And moving on to number nine, this is the General Fund Reserve Policy. And I do have a speaker card for that, but first of all, I just want to sort of outline what this is. So, this is establishing some reserve funds for the General Fund that will eventually be populated with, the General Fund fund balance commitment is 6.6% of General Fund expenditures, eventually, not right away. And the General Fund Economic Stabilization Fund Balance is 3.3%, again, eventually, not right away. And there's also a compensated absences fund balance, and this is for paying the balance of leave when employees retire, for instance, or otherwise separate. And so, this is necessary because the city doesn't specifically budget for these payments, which are difficult to budget for. And it's, it's not terribly large either. And finally, the Facility Maintenance and Replacement Fund Balance. And so, this is designed for future city facilities, relocation, reconstruction, emergency repairs, and so on. All of our city facilities, or most of our city facilities are rather old and in challenging condition. And we don't currently have maintenance or replacement plan. And so, this is meant to deal with emergencies that come up regarding our facilities. So, let's go on and have our one speaker, Bill Collins.
Thank you.
You're kidding.
I have a long meeting.
Okay. Wait a minute. You have item nine. So, you want to, you want to speak on short-term rentals?
Oral communications.
Oral communications, okay. Okay, so, can I have a?
Move that we approve item nine?
Items.
Six and nine.
Six and nine.
I'll second.
Okay. Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Okay. Now, for oral communications. I have a card here from somebody named Bill Collins. If you want to come up.
Mr. Mayor and members, I wanted to suggest some changes to the code enforcement process. I think we've got very uneven enforcement. As you probably know, the code is enforced only upon complaint. So, if the code enforcement officer is driving down the street, and there's a house with five-foot-tall weeds, sofas in the front, such as I have in my neighborhood, it's ignored. Code enforcement doesn't do anything. That's just the design of the program. But if somebody complains about another house with a similar or a lesser problem, code enforcement descends on them with a letter that's frankly, pretty threatening. It's meant to be intimidating. It warns, you know, if you don't do this within 10 days, you'll be fined. The letter comes by certified mail. There's no mention of an appeals process. Apparently, there is an appeals process, but it's something of a secret. So, I think it's fair to say, nobody uses the appeals process if you don't know about it. And I think the notice of violation firstly should be toned down and more respectful. And secondly, I think it should include reference to the appeals process. Also, the notice of violation comes cold in the mail, certified mail. That's apparently a change from in the past, where someone would knock on your door and say, I'm with code enforcement, we have a complaint, can I show you what we need you to do? That happened last year. A nice man named Lamont Mack came to my house and asked me to trim some bushes, and he was very respectful. And you want to cooperate with somebody who addresses you with respect. This year, no prior notice, just this cold, nasty letter from the city, which I think is not a credit to the city to be trying to threaten people that way. But that's the current letter. You know, somebody said, well, that's the way it's, it used to be. Well, that doesn't make it right, in my opinion. Some of the code sections also are a little vague, or maybe iffy. For one that comes to mind, for example, if somebody took your garbage bins back in to the side of the house, but they're still visible from the street, you could possibly be fined for that. You know, some seniors, that's the best they can do to move those big bins. The last point I want to make is, when you notify code enforcement, you think you're, you've made the adjustment, the change they want, and you're done, they should get back to you and say, yeah, we agree. There should be closure. And I didn't get that when my neighbors complained about me. My neighbors only complain about neighbors who they don't get along with, so, you know, the city's kind of taking sides in these little neighborhood disputes. But it would be nice to get something, a phone call, an email, a letter that says, you're done. Thank you for doing it. That's it. So, you might consider a task force or something to look into some of these improvements in the process, make it a little more friendly to the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Onto council communications. Don't everybody jump at once. Sue Vatalas.
I'll go. I went to the Tuesday talks, where the city manager talked at the chamber. He had a lot of good questions, some hard ones, just the way it is, right? Council of Cities was quite interesting. They had a presentation on China, and the number of people who walk in China is 90% of the public. They, their walking deaths in one year are 400,000, whereas ours in the United States in 2017 was 5,000. At the end of this speech, the man said, the moral of this is, don't walk. And it was, it was, I know I'm not presenting it very well, but it was actually really interesting to see. And it was a per capita amount is about 100 times the deaths that we have. And mainly, it's because people don't pay attention, and we're finding that a lot in the United States now, too, when you're walking. Try to pay attention. People on their phones just walk out in front of cars. So, it was, it was important. And also, there was a presentation on a Japanese-style high-speed rail that would go from San Bruno to Stockton. It would take a total of 24 minutes. And the reason for Stockton is the cost of housing in Stockton is very small, and they have a huge amount of land and are willing to build. This was just a proposal. He had, he had it all, a whole video. It was quite interesting, but it would start in San Bruno, so close to us. I went to the Breakfast of Champions. Horace Hinshaw puts it on every year. It is student athletes who are high-grade achievers. They're nominated by their schools. It was all high school students. That was really nice. And on to the Democrats, where John Keener and Kevin Woodhouse both spoke. Then, I went to the Pacifica Resource Center Volunteer Appreciation. That was good, too. They honored several people who have given many, many, many hours to the Resource Center. Right after that was the Pacifica School Volunteers Appreciation. I only read out loud to students. A lot of people work every day or, or two or three times a week. The reading aloud is very fulfilling. You're reading to kids, they, they look at you like you're so special when you're up there reading. So, it's a good thing everyone should be involved in it. I went to Home for All. Kevin also went to that. It was about transportation and housing. Some of it we can use. Some of it only relates to the large transportation corridors, where they have barred putting housing in the transportation corridors. And last, I went to the Heart Event, and the Heart Event was honoring Wendy Tokloff for the start of the, sorry, the district building 45 units for workforce housing. And they're working with her, and everybody was so happy to see that project is hopefully moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Mike O'Neil.
I attended the American Legion's Memorial Day Observance yesterday to honor the people from Pacifica that died in Vietnam, and all veterans. I also attended the Library JPA. We had a report on the summer program so that the kids don't have the loss of knowledge or reading skills during the summer. And they actually are compiling the statistics to show, because lots of times, the teachers almost have to teach the first two or three weeks to make up for what the kids lost or forgot during the summer. So, this is a program to stop that, and it's also a program that the county is funding. It's called the Big Lift, that every third grader in San Mateo County will be able to read at the third grade level. Unfortunately, President Trump cut quite a bit of the funding out, so San Mateo County has stepped up with some others, with some other funding, but they did have to cut it back to some programs. This is also where the kids that qualify for free lunches at schools get their free lunches during the summer and nutrition. Unfortunately, we don't have the facilities in Pacifica to be able to offer that. Also, Pacifica Democrats, where I heard John and Kevin speak, went to ethics training. And what was fun, too, is this is an annual event, the City Employee Recognition, and we honor all those employees that have been here five, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 35 years. Wow, that's a long time. Another thing was the boys and girls, so I got to be a judge for the boys and girls spelling bee. And it was from like second grade all the way up to seventh grade. And it was kind of funny. If one missed a word, they all missed the same word. So, it was like never-ending, because they all got to start over again, and it just kept going on and on and on till, it was supposed to end at like 6, went on till 7:30, okay? And the middle schoolers were just all tripping out on the same word. It was really, it was really, it was fun. It was, I enjoyed it. It was cool, but it was just kind of a challenge. I also was at the chamber thing where Kevin spoke to the chamber members, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Sue DeGree.
First of all, I want to remind everybody that June is right a few days away, and its elections are different this year. So, you need, you're not going to pre-six as usual, so check it out, your library and your city hall, or just go on the website to find out. But you should have your ballots, and you turn them in. You can mail them, or you turn them in at city hall, and I think the library, too, isn't it?
City Hall has a ballot, a drop box, on, I believe, June 2nd to June 5th. A voting center is at the Pacifica School District Office.
Oh, yeah, right.
And also, St. Peter's Catholic Church.
So, I don't know about you, but I already feel a little odd, and I'm worried that I may not be able to vote if I don't do it right. But just a reminder about that. So, I did attend a meeting at SAM Trans regarding Terranova and Oceania Schools. It was mostly, it was very well-attended. I mean, all the important folks were there that knew the data, mostly Brisbane parents having issues. But there was a very good meeting to make sure that we didn't mess things up even more. I just had a question, though, is I thought that there was no longer any school bus. I gave myself a note to look into that. We weren't allowed to do some things with SAM Trans because of school bus laws. But as far as I know, there's not as many school buses in the nation as there were. So, I'm trying to figure out how that's affecting. It doesn't affect so much here. It doesn't affect so much here in Pacifica, as far as I can tell, but it might. The other one is Sea Level Rise, another meeting coming up on the 31st, which is Thursday, and I believe that's at the Community Center. The fire, we have, I think we're what, annually now, a meeting with the Fire Department with Pacifica, Brisbane, and Daly City. It's held in the Daly City, City Hall, and that'll be, I don't know if I have the time, but I didn't put the date. The date is June 5th. And it's a very short meeting, so I've asked, because I, when I looked at the notice on email, I did not see the agenda fully there, just the agenda, but not documents that you can look at. The meeting usually goes very quickly. So if you're interested, you want to check it out now so you know whether or not you want to show up and say anything. So I was at some of the other things, too, but no need to put all that in there. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Deirdre Martin.
Yeah, I was going to mention also about the Sea Level Rise meeting at 6:00 to 9:00 at the Community Center. Please get engaged. Remind your neighbors, remind your friends that it's very important that you show up and learn more about it, because it will affect us all, no matter where you live here in Pacifica. Also, I attended my, the CCAG Bike and Pedestrian. There's no call for projects this year. We're looking at revising the application process and just kind of getting that just so, when we have some extensions for funds through them. We decided not to have a call for projects this year, because there wasn't a ton of money. So we're waiting to kind of stash some money for next year, too. So just keep an eye out for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Deirdre. I have quite a list here, but some of them have already been knocked off by other folks. So the Pacifica Daly City Democrats, Kevin and I spoke at their, their meeting and on the budget. I went to the Peter Point Headlands, the dedication of, the completion of the trails and rehabilitation up there, which was really wonderful. And I was also at the Employee Recognition Lunch. I went to the pre-emergency board meeting. This is the, the group that coordinates the electronics, that coordinate the electronics and the ambulances that respond to various medical emergencies. Peninsula Clean Energy Board, went to that also. I was also at the volunteer lunch for the Pacifica Resource Center at the, at the American Legion, the American Legion Hall. And afterwards, stuck around for my monthly stint with the Harvest Baskets, where we give food away to clients of the Pacifica Resource Center. And finally, I spoke at the Memorial Day Service for Pacifica. And that was uplifting, I guess. So thank you. Sue Vatalos.
I just want to remind people, too, that the Chamber has their big event of the year, which is the Taste of Pacifica on Saturday at the Moose Lodge. And they have various restaurants and even the breweries and throughout Pacifica, who are going to give you samples of food and drinks. It's a fun event. Thank you.
Okay. Staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Keener. Councilmember Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I just have a few updates. First, I want to begin with, at our last city council meeting, we, we honored Police Officer Joe Gomez for his activity in saving, his response in saving a life at the, at the San Bruno YouTube shooting. And on Tuesday, June 12th, at 7:00 PM at the San Bruno City Council Meeting, they will be honoring a number of officers from San Bruno, Burlingame, as well as Officer Joe Gomez from Pacifica that night. So that's the city council meeting on Tuesday, June 12th, 7:00 PM. It's at their senior center, 1555 Crystal Springs Road, if anyone wants to go see that honoring. Next, I'd like to just mention that we, last week, sent an additional follow-up letter to the FAA as a follow-up to a letter that we sent to them in March regarding aircraft noise. And that, in this case, because we did not receive a response or acknowledgement to our initial letter, Congresswoman Spear is going to, has promised to help us in assuring this follow-up letter through, through to the FAA and follow up with them. So we'll see if we do hear a response. I want to continue to plug, as I did in, in last week's Connect with Pacifica introduction, to encourage Pacifica residents to take the county's Get Us Moving survey, which relates to every resident in Pacifica giving their opinion about how potential sales tax revenues, if that gets put on the ballot for November, would be used for transit infrastructure. So we've been pushing that out hard to try to get as many Pacifica residents as possible to take that survey, because it will make a difference in, in that process. And finally, I will also mention, as, as Councilmember O'Neil mentioned, we had the Employee Recognition Event recently, and that's a fantastic event. It's a very important event internal to the organization to acknowledge the dedication and the long service that employees have provided here. So it was, it was a great, great event, and I, I really enjoyed it. It was my first employee recognition event for, here at the city.
Actually, I think one of the recipients is here Captain Spanheimer. And he's, what, 25 years? You can stand up and wave.
That's right.
25 years with Pacifica.
Congrats to Captain Joe Spanheimer for those years of service. And then I did want to ask Planning Director Werra Meister, potential correction, Thursday night's Sea Level Rise meeting is 6:00 to 8:00, or 6:00 to 9:00? Yes, so it's 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. It's a, it's a two-hour meeting instead of a three-hour meeting. Just offered that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Next, we have a public hearing. And this is consideration of an ordinance establishing regulatory authority over short-term rentals and implementation of a short-term rentals regulation program. Could we have a staff report, please?
Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Pacifica City Council. We are setting up the AV presentation right now. We will commence shortly. And I believe you all have hard copies of the presentation. And you can also see them on those nifty video screens as well. So our, our goal here tonight is to provide you with an explanation of short-term rentals, city code implications, actions that we've taken so far as a city to address the short-term rental regulations, the objective of the ordinance before you, and a couple of words about transient occupancy tax collection. So short-term rentals, dwelling or portion of a dwelling that is rented for less than 30 consecutive calendar days. Often, but not exclusively rented through online hosting platforms such as Airbnb and HomeAway. This can impact neighborhoods and land uses by introducing commercial-type uses and structures that are designed for residential living. Some of the short-term rental online companies that we see are Airbnb, there's Dwellable, there's HomeAway, there's FlipKey, there's Rent by Owner. There is a plethora of organizations that offer online short-term rental services. These are just a small sample, but this sample happens to be some of the bigger players in the market. So the short-term rental operations in Pacifica, as you can see, we're, we're sort of toward the two-thirds into that grid. But the short-term rentals in Pacifica, 41% is a full-unit rental, and 29% is just a room rental. And there is, we're estimating 2% is a shared-room rental. And by the way, this information comes from an organization called 21 Elements, who did a survey of the city of Pacifica, and I believe San Mateo County in general, back in 2015. So as far as San Mateo County is at a glance, and again, all this comes from 21 Elements...
Lorenzo?
Yes.
On that last slide, how come it doesn't add up to 100%? Is there some other category that, that we're missing? So 41, 29, and 2?
Yeah, I, I think there's probably some other category. That's other.
Okay, other.
Yeah. Maybe it's a barn? No, who knows? So for the short-term rentals operations here in Pacifica and San Mateo County, and so at a glance, we're looking at an average of 100-day, number of days the average unit is occupied by a guest. 47% of the listings are for the entire home. 80% of the hosts in San Mateo County are professional, meaning their homes are available for rental 90-plus days per year. 30 units are listed by, by the top host for San Mateo County. And back in 2015, the average price per night was $193. That's within the county. 43% of the hosts have multiple listings.
I have a question.
Yes.
So multiple listing means there's more than one host? Is that what it means?
Well, one host, but you've got listings on Airbnb, VRBO.
So what does one host refer to?
One home.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry.
I think that's also referring to the fact that they may be what's considered a professional host, so they have multiple income properties that they're, they're putting up on the platforms.
So when you say one host to, what you just said, is that referring to Airbnb and the other names that you had on the screen?
So the host is an individual. So it means that there is somebody who's, who's using this as a business. So they bought multiple properties. This is San Mateo County, not necessarily Pacifica. And they have multiple homes that they're putting up on one of the platforms for rent.
So it's a person that has all of these, rather than a corporation or something?
You know, the owner could be a corporation.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. So that's, by the way, that's Planning Director Tina Werra Meister there, in case... As far as our current city code, the code does not identify short-term rental uses. Therefore, the use is considered to be prohibited. And also, these operations may be taxed under state and local Muni codes. So the actions that we've taken so far, way back on August 28, 2017, we had a study session. And council received a report outlining the issues associated with short-term rentals. We discussed regulatory approaches and provided, and you provided direction to us. Our intention was to contract with a consultant and would gather certain detailed information. We had conversations with two organizations. And basically, we found out that they were more interested in attaining our business as a tracker and enforcement arm for our program, which at this time doesn't exist. So we were able to get some information from them, but not as complete information as we would have liked. So therefore, we sort of embarked on our own and just sort of based on the research that we've seen so far, we were very convinced that there's a viable market here in Pacifica. Right before I came to this meeting, I did a search on Airbnb for Pacifica rentals over the Labor Day weekend. There were 37 properties left, and this is how Airbnb phrases...
Memorial Day or Labor Day?
Labor Day. Did I say Memorial Day?
No, you said Labor Day.
Labor Day.
I was trying to make sure you weren't talking about Memorial Day.
Right. So, so I picked a weekend that, you know, it's, it's a very beautiful weekend, it's a long weekend. And so there are 37 rentals available during that weekend. The caption on the Airbnb page said, "17% of the properties that were available are left." So that 37 properties represents only 37% of the properties that were available.
17.
I'm sorry, 17% of the properties that were available. So you multiply that out and you come up with over 200 properties. I'm sure Councilman Keener's probably doing that right now. So, so I don't know if that's a marketing ploy by Airbnb, but it is, it is interesting that there were that many properties available, and they've all been snapped up except for those 37. But again, that's just a sample of the kind of snooping around we've been doing. During the study session, council directed that short-term rentals should be paying transient occupancy tax due to the city. So for fiscal year 2017, and here's another action, the city council included preparation of land use requirements to manage short-term rentals and the collection of potential transient occupancy tax in the work plan for 2017-18, our current fiscal year. Back on August 16th, last month, the Planning Commission held a hearing on a proposed amendment to enact Article 49 of Chapter 4 of Title IX of the Pacifica Muni Code. An adopted resolution number 994 initiating and recommending to the city council approval of the text amendment or the ordinance that's before you. And so, the ordinance that is before you does a number of things. It permits short-term rentals in residential districts here in the city of Pacifica. It also clarifies that short-term rental permitting does not establish vested land use rights. Short-term rentals will be subject to further regulation and prohibition by the city. So we make that clear, that we're just starting this process, we're going to go away, we're going to put this program together, we're going to gather data and more specifics, and then we'll probably come back to you in six months to a year with suggestions on regulatory activities going forward. Fourth bullet is, we're requiring short-term operators, short-term rental operators to obtain a short-term rental permit, ensure that they comply with operating requirements regarding smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and fire extinguishers. We're also requiring that they obtain a business license and pay all applicable transient occupancy taxes. The ordinance also prohibits rental of any vehicle, trailer, tent, storage shed, or garage as renting camping spaces or private property and showing up more frequently in the online platforms. So folks are very creative, and we're doing what we can to curb that creativity. As far as the TOT is concerned, no ballot measure is required. If council direction is just to collect the TOT and the business license tax, as is, from the short-term rental operators. And as you all know, the TOT is 12% of the daily room rate. And at the time that we presented this item to you back in August of 2017, we were estimating, based on what we saw... based on what we saw on the Twenty-One Elements document, that we could generate about $167,000 in TOT tax a year. That may be on the low side, but I don't have enough basis right now to give you a better number. So we'll go with their number, but I'm pretty sure we can, we'll meet that number. Currently, our TOT on an annual basis is about 1.7 million. So this would be a help and revenue-wise, but it will also be a way to regulate some of those short-term rentals that are out there that may be causing issues with some of the communities, and it's just a way for us to have a hand in making sure that these entities are abiding by the way the city of Pacifica expects them to. And with that, I and Director Wermeyer are available for questions.
Okay, Mike O'Neil.
Thanks, I had mentioned to the city manager what I met with him today about, I was a little disappointed in that he didn't have, touch on conversions on this, or like I know Councilmember Martin mentioned, you know, width of streets and stuff like that when we talked back in August. But he said that, and you just said you're going to come back in about six months to a year with that information, correct?
Right. I'd like to come back to you with specifics. By the time we come back to you, and again, we are making the decision right now to go with a third party. There are two organizations that I've talked with that could definitely do the job, but we'll go ahead and issue an RFP and bring in someone who can give us these specifics. Once we have the specifics, we'll know exactly where these dwellings are. We'll be able to talk to the Pacifica PD to see if there is, you know, have they gotten excessive amount of calls? Do we have issues in those neighborhoods? And we will actually have data and information for you all to react to when putting the regulations together.
Okay. Now, the next thing is enforcement. I noticed there's a lot of things where it's more proactive. They have to register, they have to get a permit and stuff. But do we have any enforcement mechanism if we see a listing, but we're not collecting transient occupancy tax?
Well, both of the, the two companies that I spoke with have the ability to reach out to the folks that are driving the listing. And so, you know, at least we'll have that communication, but actually enforcing, we'll look into those measures with the city attorney. But for right now, we're being optimistic that everyone will comply.
And just to follow up with that, we definitely do have the authority to enforce. The question is, what staff resources do we have to implement enforcement? But we absolutely have the ability to enforce this ordinance and regulations if it's adopted by the council.
Okay. And then I guess the audit, is there self-auditing Airbnb, et cetera?
Right now. Right now. Again, we're just starting. And so, the same way that, you know, I'm looking to gather data and information for you all to react to, that data will also be useful for income tracking purposes as well. Because once we're able to sort of track and match the listings with certain addresses, then that'll lead us to estimates of income flow, and that'll lead me to estimate what we should have gotten in taxes versus what we receive. And if the two are the same, then there's no issue.
Now, I'm assuming they would be subject to the same fire inspection fees? I think it's like a hundred and fifty bucks or something that any other business would have? Smoke detectors, carbon monoxide? I mean, are we sending an inspector out there?
We're not at this point. I don't know that the fire department would at this point either. That is something that's going to need to come up if we determine that we have professional listers. I think the, anecdotally, we understand that there may be a family that goes on vacation and rents out their house while they're gone. They don't necessarily, they're not necessarily a professional business. But what we'll find out by starting this business registration process is to determine, okay, do we really have somebody who's, just has an income property that they're renting out through Airbnb and that, or, you know, some other platform, one of the platforms that may need more inspection and regulation.
Now, will they, will you also, are we going to be licensing or keeping track of professional managers? Not the owners, but the manager that might go in, just like, you know, the maid comes in at a hotel? When someone moves out, these managers, these people move in?
We'll be able to track who's ever driving the listing and who's ever behind the listing. So if that's a manager, if that's a corporation, if that's an individual, we'll be able to, we should be able to track all of that.
Okay.
And I wanted to address your prior question, just to add a little bit more. The short-term rental operator permit, right now, we have it priced at about $150 annually. That's subject to change based on how much it costs to process it. But what we're basically asking the operators to do is to ensure that they are maintaining their smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors and making sure that their residences or these domiciles are safe. And then, you know, again, once we get more data, then we can move to the next step as to whether a fire inspection is the inappropriate next step.
Is there, I don't know, and this is kind of a rhetorical question, but in, there's people that do this professionally, right? I mean, they rent their house out three-hundred days a year or whatever, okay?
I wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah. So would they fall under the same business requirements of ADA, you know, entrance and stuff? Would they, parking requirements? Or is that all an enforcement thing coming down the road?
That's all up to us in terms of how we want to adopt our more comprehensive regulatory program. So one of the things that we will be coming back to you with is a much more comprehensive regulatory program that will discuss and give you options on how do you want to regulate short-term rentals? How extensive do you want those regulations to be? Do you want it to include, you know, regulations related to conversions? A lot of, there are a lot of models out there, you know. I don't know many communities that are doing exactly the same thing. They're all doing something different, and it depends on what you want for your community, which is why staff is going to be getting more outside assistance to determine, to give them an idea of what is happening in Pacifica. What are the impacts that we see here in Pacifica, which may be different than what you might see in another community, and bring all that back to you. The point of bringing this ordinance to you on a more expedited basis was because of the fact we, you know, as Assistant City Manager Hines relayed to you, we have short-term rentals operating right now. We are not collecting any revenue from them, from that ongoing business, and we thought to do that sooner rather than later was the most optimal way to approach it.
Passing this ordinance tonight to collect the revenues does not preclude us from doing any sort of enforcement or regulations down the road?
No, no, and in fact, that is specifically set forth in the ordinance.
Okay.
So back on Slide 10, I just want to make sure we're clear. Back on Slide 10, third bullet down, we make it clear that these, short-term rental will be subject to further regulations and prohibitions by the city. We are, in addition to looking at, or looking to work with an outside entity to help us track these, we're also watching the other cities. I had a good conversation with one of the planning folks from Redwood City last Friday to see how they're managing their program. Their ordinance is very similar to ours. Millbrae is going through it as well. The city of San Mateo is going with, going through it as well. So we're all kind of growing together into this, and there's a lot of cities out there to keep an eye on, and we can adopt their best practices as well.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Deirdre Martin.
I want to apologize to Director Wermeyer for sending my email today about the accessory dwelling units, because you know how you're like looking for something really hard and you just completely miss it? Well, I was looking really hard and completely missed it, so I'm embarrassed. So I apologize, but I wanted to actually just make that clear to the public too, that accessory dwelling units do not apply here. So when we were doing, when we were studying accessory dwelling units, accessory dwelling units can be attached or detached, right?
Correct.
So detached accessory dwelling units do not apply, right?
Any type of accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, so any type. So that's going to be something that might be hard to monitor, right? If it's an attached dwelling unit. We would have a permit for it though, right?
Right. We would have a permit for it to create a new kitchen, close off walls, they're still going to get a building permit even though it may be within the footprint of the existing home. So we should be aware that there's an ADU at a unit. And then through this process, we'll be able to cross-check to see if we're possibly getting a permit for a short-term rental that's at a site where there is an ADU, and be able to communicate with the owner and let them know what the rules are.
Okay. So yeah, I just wanted to make that point, that we're encouraging accessory dwelling units for longer-term stays, nothing under thirty days that's going to most likely be the policy here. So in one of the sections, it says that the Coastal Commission has to approve this, has to go for final approval to the Coastal Commission. I'm, was just a little bit confused on what if the Coastal Commission says no? Does that just, does that no just apply to the houses within a certain distance from the coast?
Right. So the Coastal Commission would only be acting on this ordinance as it relates to the coastal zone. Because this ordinance is consistent with their, I guess, guidelines or direction, we don't anticipate that they will have any issue, and thus far, they haven't communicated any issue with this ordinance to us.
Okay, great. So they have a heads-up at least, right? Okay. And then the other questions that I have were, it sounds to me like they might be more for later in the discussion, but I'll just say them now in case we do know any of them. If somebody has their permit revoked, I was just kind of, wanted us to think a little bit about how can people complain, right? Sort of code enforcement. And then for appeals, making sure that we have an appeal fee listed too. And I also wanted to, and I think that's all for later, right? Okay. It sounds to me like we're going to go with a third-party vendor to help manage the implementation and maybe the longer-term maintenance of this. And I just wanted to know if there were any preliminary budgeted numbers on this and like a half a staff or is going to be needed? Anything yet?
We are looking at, I've got one organization that is providing a number of services, and I'm sort of estimating it's between fifteen and $20,000 a year. We've got another organization that is actually offering to take over the entire TOT collections process from the city at roughly $750 per organization or contributor. And as far as the short-term rental administration, they're willing to do that for fifteen percent of the collected revenue.
Those are very, a lot of different rules going on there, so.
Yes. So again, we've.
You got your work cut out for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
You too.
Thank you, Deirdre. Suvaros.
I tried looking it up also, and it's very complicated because I just looked up Airbnb.
Yeah.
The fifth house down is in South San Francisco.
Right.
And comes out in Pacifica. I tried comparing the houses on VRBO, which is exactly the same as HomeAway, so if you use VRBO, HomeAway, and there's a third one that they own, you're going to get the same listings.
Right.
But I tried to compare VRBO and Airbnb, and you can't do it because even the prices vary.
Yes.
Because one of them tells you the full price, including all their fees, and the other one just tells you the base price without the fees. So you can't even compare the two, and they don't give addresses.
No.
So it's really difficult.
Right.
And I found twenty on VRBO.
Right.
That were actually in Pacifica, because I was doing the mileage.
Right, right.
From the city center, and that helped me to determine that there were twenty, and I was looking in November. There's other issues. I have an Airbnb in Arizona, and if I want to go there, then I block it out. So you could see that as there being a tenant there, even though I blocked it. Or this weekend, I have people staying there, they're family, and I blocked that out. So I wouldn't want to pay tax on times when I'm not even collecting any money.
Right.
So it's an, that's an interesting thing that they'll need to look at, too, blocks versus actual rentals.
Well, I think when we establish contact with these, the short-term rental operators, I think that's a conversation that we can have. And they were going to raise that concern just like you did, and that'll be part of what we bring back to you all to react to. But that's, thank you for that perspective.
It's a little different.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, most, all of my questions have already been asked, so.
Public cards?
Pardon?
Any cards?
No, we have no cards from the public. Nobody wishes to speak.
All move to approve implementation of a short-term rental regulation program and introduce waive the first reading and read by title only the ordinance entitled in order to the city council of the city of Pacifica, adding Article 49 to Chapter Four of Title Nine of the Pacifica Municipal Code relating to short-term rentals.
Second.
Okay. Please vote. And that passes five to zero.
Thank you for all your work, Tina and Lorenzo.
Thanks.
Don't forget Director Wermeyer.
You get to stick around for the next item too, right?
Uh, no. Are there any more people here?
The next items are items for consideration, and number eleven is introduction of an ordinance within, of the city council of the city of Pacifica amending Chapter Eight Tow Services within Title Four of the Pacifica Municipal Code relating to the rotational tow program. And staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, city staff, members of the public. I'm Joe Spanheimer, captain with the police department. The reason I'm here tonight is to discuss the police department's rotational tow program. In April 1995, city council adopted an ordinance within Chapter Eight, Title Four of the Pacifica Municipal Code, which allowed for the city's regulation of tow services by formal written contract duly authorized by city council. And that's all it said. Very, very vague, just one sentence. No other language was included. Since then, in 2011, the police department began its first franchise tow agreement. In brief, the agreement allowed police department to charge a $50 fee to tow companies in the program for non-consensual police toes. Non-consensual toes typically consist of vehicle impounds for drivers who had been arrested or those toes for things such as expired vehicle registration over six months and vehicles abandoned upon the roadway. The $50 fee is intended for the police department to recoup cost of staff time involved in towing and processing of those towed vehicles. So the PowerPoint presentation here is a last-minute edition, so I apologize it was not included in the packet. But the slide right there just shows the benefit of having a franchise tow agreement. Having this agreement in place with the tow companies oftentimes reduces citizen complaints about conduct of the tow operators, reduces officer downtime, waiting for toes in the field because we dictate the response time from the tow companies. Lean violations. When owners of vehicles do not pick up their vehicles in a timely manner, the tow companies do have the right to place a lien on the vehicle and sell those, and we make sure it's done in an appropriate manner. Overcharging. Overcharging, we regulate the fees that tow companies can charge vehicle owners. The oversight of tow companies, their conduct, their professionalism, they even have to abide by our gratuity policy that we have in the city. Criminal behavior. Owners and operators, drivers are, they have a background investigation done on them and we look at any criminal convictions they may have and we may ban some of, some of the operators and even owners based on criminal convictions. And then the agreement allows for recovery of costs consistent with what's allowed in the Vehicle Code. And what I'd like to do here tonight is talk about an amendment to the existing municipal code. This would bring the ordinance into current modern business practice in applying the city's rotational tow program and provides a process for application and selection of tow companies in that program. Those applications would be reviewed by the Chief of Police and tow companies would need to meet certain criteria to be eligible for the program, including among others satisfactory experience and ability to conduct towing in a prompt and safe manner. There will be a maximum of three tow companies at a time on the rotational tow program. Each tow company would need to execute a franchise tow agreement which specifies requirements of the program. A tow company that is selected for the program cannot transfer, sell, assign the franchise agreement unless authorized by the Chief of Police. And this amendment reflects, does not change the current police practice, makes it more transparent and viewable to the public essentially. So as I alluded to before, the franchise tow agreement will outline the scope of work that is required by tow companies, outlines in terms of contract, and this one in particular is for one year. We have currently been operating franchise tow agreements since 2011, like I mentioned, and currently they're operating without a contract. We haven't had a signed contract in roughly two years, I believe. The agreement will outline fees and payments, our expectations as a Police Department and a city, but outline storage and release procedures and fees and requires the adequate amount of insurance is provided by the tow companies. All right, there we go. Just to demonstrate some of the program revenue that we've experienced since fiscal year 13, 14 through February of this year, you can see we make, maybe on average, or we recover, let's say on average, about $19,000 or so a year. You can see the number of toes, which will average anywhere from, you know, 450, as of February this year, 292. We average 35 toes per month, distributed amongst each of the three tow companies. So they do about 12 toes for us per month. So the $50 franchise fee is a fee paid to the city, you know, based on each non-consensual toe. Those non-consensual toes are essentially brought to our attention by owner or operator criminal intent, negligence, or abandonment. Now, when these drivers want to get their vehicle released, then they pay a fee to the Police Department of $138 for a vehicle release fee. We do not charge that for victims of crimes, that is waived. And then they do have to pay a fee to the tow companies for the actual tow and the storage of the vehicle, depending on how long it's been housed in their facilities.
And how much is that typically?
Now, what I do is I take an average of what the CHP allows within our county and I can give you a number in just a minute. Just passed it. All right, the typical fees that we allow tow companies to charge is $250. Actually, that was, yeah, that's the current fee. $250 per day, or I'm sorry, that's for the actual tow, $250. Storage daily is $80. And then a gate fee, if it's after hours or on a holiday, weekend is $125. There's an extra fee for, a dolly has to be used because there's much more intense labor on the, on the part of the tow driver than $75. And again, that's an average of what CHP allows, so.
Great. Gives us an idea, anyway. Sue Vargas.
Sorry.
Yes.
How many tow companies do we have in Pacifica right now?
Oh, we currently have three.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
All right, so the three would likely be the three, if they pass.
Most likely. They've all been operating in good standing and since my 25 years here at the department, we've only had three.
Okay, thanks.
Mike O'Neil.
I wanted to thank Captain Spanheimer and the City Manager because when I met with Kevin, I looked, the $50 release fee seemed really small to me because I did some research and San Francisco's outrageous at 250, but Half Moon Bay is 90, Millbrae was like 130 or whatever. And then Captain Spanheimer researched it and found out, so we have a $138 release fee and the 50, plus the $50, so we're about $200, $188, right?
If you add the two together that we could potentially get for cost recovery from a tow, that would be accurate.
Do you notice that, does it cover the cost of the tow?
It did. Last time a survey was done by one of my counterparts in 2011, that was what they recommended as a reasonable fee. You know, I talked to the tow company operators and their owners on annual basis and, you know, they, they do talk about the cost of scrap metal and what it costs them. So I do think $50 is reasonable. It's not, again, it's not money-making, it is cost recovery.
So in the report, you called it like, you know, $50, but it's really almost just a fee to the city to cover the paperwork and then there's the vehicle release fee, right? It's almost a towing fee and then there's the vehicle release fee.
Yes, so if I could
That's what confused me.
Explain. The, so the franchise fees do us from the tow companies for every vehicle we tow and that's more intended to cover officer time in the field. So let's say there will be a DUI arrest and then the vehicle has to be impounded by the officer to make sure there's nothing, you know, that would pose a danger to the tow company, no items of extreme value that we would need to keep in safekeeping. So that, that takes time, you know, and when they could be doing other things. We have to do a form that the tow companies have to, have to sign off on. So that's what the franchise fee more covers and then
That's the $138 or the $50?
I think that would be the $50 franchise fee. And then the, the other, the $138, that's for our front office doing processing, for our supervisory staff, the watchman are coming in and reviewing, allowing the vehicle to be released or not. So it covers more of that paperwork after the fact.
Okay. So I mean, I'm just kind of throwing it out to the council. I mean, if it's about an hour with a car that's in a wreck or needs to be towed, I mean, does the officer spend more than an hour there?
It'll vary. Some vehicles more, are more intensive than others.
On average, 45 minutes to an hour?
More, more about a half hour to 45 minutes. And then the required, the required response time is a half hour for the tow, tow operators. So the officer will be inventorying the vehicle, completing the form. And when, when they think it's reasonable, they'll call the tow company, the tow company will then take, you know, respond, respond within a half hour generally.
Is there one or two officers there?
It varies. Most times it'll be just one officer, sometimes though, if it, depending on what the circumstances are, if other people are around, whatever, we'll, we'll have two officers there for safety purposes. So I've been on, I've been on scenes sometimes where three officers have been there just because it's been necessary.
Right, right. So I don't know, I was just, if we are looking for cost recovery, is the $50 really cover it? You know, for 45 minutes of an officer's time? So, I mean, I'm just throwing it out for discussion and I don't know if we want to talk about it or not, so. But thank you for getting back to me this afternoon.
You're welcome, sir.
Deirdre Martin.
Well, if the question is, does that cover the cost, the cost recovery, I doubt $50 covers that, but I don't know if we're looking, are we looking to make money also? I mean, if we were wanting to split even, we would take, we would, we would actually do an equation, right?
Well, the code says that we can't make money out of a service and this is a service. But I don't think the code says we have to subsidize it, correct?
Correct. We, we only need, we can charge the reasonable cost of providing the service.
And I mean, given the cost of the salary, benefits and everything else for an officer, I bet it's more than $50 an hour.
Yeah, I mean, I think an argument could be made, you know, to do an equation of, you know, the average salary and benefits and increase that. I don't, I mean, if there's an appetite for it, I'd support it, but otherwise, I'm okay with this.
I don't necessarily want to go the San Francisco route of $250.
I think it's actually 500 because I got towed just about last year, I think.
Really?
Took me 500, it cost me 500 to get, to get my car out.
Well, that might, did I include storage fees and stuff?
It included a dolly lift, was it called a dolly lift?
Yeah, a dolly, that would be a fee that the owner, operator would pay to the tow company, not, not to the Police Department.
So that was like all-inclusive, but all said and done, out the door, my car cost me $500 to get back.
Yeah. The $50, that would, that's not mentioned in the, in the ordinance, but that would be part of the fee schedule that we pass every year with the budget, isn't that right?
Yes, the $50 fee is mentioned in the franchise agreement, which was an attachment, and then I believe Chief Stidle also attached it to the, to the fee schedule that would be approved.
Okay.
And if I, if I may, in working on this with Chief Stidle, I, I think we feel that $50 is satisfactory. There may be instances where it, it, you know, is exceeded, you know, by the time officer spent in the field, but in general, I think it's, I think it's fair.
Okay, good. That's, that's helpful. Any other questions?
So do we vote on this or do we, yeah?
Yes, yes, we do. And, and we have no cards from the public, so.
I'll make a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion to move the wave, to move to waive the first reading and introduce by title an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica amending Chapter 8 within Title 4 of the Pacifica Municipal Code relating to the Police Department rotational tow program.
Second.
Sue DeGruy second. Please vote. And that passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Next item is the proposed 2018-19 General Fund Budget, Departmental Briefings. And tonight, we get Public Works, Wastewater, Parks, Beaches and Rec, Capital Improvement Budget, Other Funds, and related budget strategies.
Good evening. Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines with you again. Tonight, we present the remainder, essentially the remainder of all of these, sort of the key topics in the 2018-19 General Fund Budget. We'll also cover some of the issues and some of the other funds as well. As you know, we have 26 funds and not all of them have, you know, hot issues and it's normally business as usual with the majority of those funds. However, we focus on the General Fund and some of these other funds that we're going to talk about tonight because there are some program implications that we wanted you to be aware of. So the first few slides are sort of repetitive, just to remind you that we have a proposed budget for 1819 of $34.6 million, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. So it is balanced. The bulk of our revenues come from department slash programmatic activities and property taxes.
And Lorenzo?
Yes.
I would think in the future, the department programs should be separated out into grants and cost recovery, fees and so on that are
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
Just wanted to mention that.
Oh, thank you, thank you. And so, and so I'll make that change with the revenues. And on the expenditure side, our expenditure pie, the bulk is public safety, followed by some of the other services that the city provides. So tonight, we are presenting the remainder of the department presentations and again, some other key issues that we wanted to bring to your attention. June 11th, we'll be coming back with the final presentation of the budget, the 1819 budget. We'll also be presenting the, the new sewer rates for your approval. As you recall, you've, the council has already approved the rates for five years. We'll just be bringing it back to you, just sort of for tacit approval, just to show you what the rates will be for the next year. And then we'll be a public hearing for the Capital Improvement Program and also the 1819 fee schedule. And by June 25th, that should be 2017, we'll be adopting the 1819 Annual Operating Budget. And then sometime after that meeting, your Assistant City Manager will be passed out on the floor because it's been a, it's, it's been a whirlwind. But luckily, public safety will be in the room that night, so I'll be okay. So we're going to start with Parks and then we're going to move to Public Works and talk about a couple of other key issues. And so to my left here is Director Michael J. Perez and our illustrious Director, Parks, Beaches and Recreation. And we're going to let Mike tell you a little bit about his program and I'll come back and talk to you about, about the budget when we're done.
Good evening, council members. The Department of Parks, Beaches and Recreation is made up of a support administrative services in three main divisions, which are childcare, recreation, and seniors. These, the department also has a very, very robust volunteer program. And our mission statement's there and it's short, so I'll read it. "To foster human development, promote health and wellness, strengthen safety and security by providing programs for children, youth, and adults to play and learn through positive recreational experiences." Let's see. All right, so I'm going to go through some of the highlights and start with the volunteer programs. "We continue to maintain strong volunteer programs and particularly for our youth and our seniors, and this is for servicing connection to the community, help deliver quality programs and activities." We had 151 senior volunteers put in 13,000 hours this year and between them, they have 725 accumulated years of volunteering. And they generated close to $95,000 in revenue for our, our senior programs this year. We have close to 100 total youth volunteers and collectively, that's about 4,300 hours of their time annually, mostly in the summer. We have a Leaders in Training Education Program that does about 2,000 hours. We have swimmer aides at the swimming pool, puts in about 1,800 hours. And then our Youth Advisory Board puts in over 500 hours doing things like Earth Day, Spelling Bee, High School Fair, our teen art show as well. So. I don't have to keep clicking. Senior Services. I don't have to keep clicking. Senior Services is completing its second year of a strategic plan, and this plan is being used as a roadmap to meet and enhance the needs of our senior community through the programs and services, and funding opportunities, funding opportunities are explored to help reduce the financial support of the city. The senior staff has seen increases in our membership, up twenty-five percent since last year. They're nearing nine hundred members right now. Increases in volunteerism and also program participation, they have about an average of three thousand participants per quarter. Seniors received a grant for an eight-passenger accessible bus in October, and this is almost a three-year process, but it was fully paid for. It's an eight-passenger accessible bus, which means we don't have to have a special license to drive it, and just helping out the city, so the city doesn't have to use a vehicle replacement fund there. Also, we completed our fourth semester of the San Francisco State School of Nursing Students, and we've had more than sixty students providing approximately fifteen hundred hours of home assessments for our Meals on Wheels clients. The Youth Recreation is the next bullet, and of course, we have some programs for after-school, summer, sports camps, field trips, classes, and of course, our childcare program, offering a wide range of activities for the youth in our community. And a large part of what the Recreation Division does is implementing the community's special events, and many of you go out and see these ones. We have our Junior Olympics, Fun Fest, Fourth of July activities, it's just a great way for us to engage the community, keep folks healthy, happy, and socially engaged. But over the last few years, we added several new events, and they've included our High School Fair, which is very popular, heavily attended, Princess Dance, Youth Spelling Bee. We had an inflatable fun run last year, so if you missed that, you got to check it out. And then this year, we also had our first Hare 911, which is very popular. If you follow us on Facebook, you kind of get to see all the cool pictures from this stuff, so. And then, next down would be to talk about the pool. So at Brink Pool, we tried really hard to maximize the program capacity and usage, increased our cost recovery, and we try to get as many programs as we can using up the lanes. And one of the things that, and I'm going to quote, this is from our Recreation Coordinator in charge of aquatics, that he makes a point that we're, by being surrounded by water here in the Bay Area, you know, whether it's the ocean rivers or bays or pools, learning how to swim proficiently could help save your life. And drowning is the leading cause of death for children five and under, and the second leading cause of death for children six to twelve. So learning how to swim is definitely a necessary lifelong skill. At the pool, aside from the swim lessons though, and I'll get to that in a minute, we have a swim team, we average two hundred members there, and they practice daily, and usually, the average member will come in for about an hour a day. Our all-access membership has a very strong number of swimmers and continues to grow, and during the morning, five AM laps from time over the past year, while Terranova was being renovated, the Terranova Pool, we had the Pacifica Coastside Tiger Sharks came over and held their practices there a couple mornings, and this brought up our numbers, actually, which was really nice. We also, that was part of our shared usage, so the pool at Terranova was just completed at the end of two thousand seventeen, and during that time, we hosted, or I guess shared space with water polo teams and swim teams from Terranova. So there was a lot of sort of creative jostling for hours where we shared lanes, sometimes we'd use three and they'd use seven, or they'd have to use the whole pool. So we had, you know, worked it out, and then Oceana decided this year that they would have a swim team, so we're doing that right now with them. It's their first year, actually, I don't, it's their first year since the pool opened having a swim team, but they didn't have a swim team for several years prior to the renovation at Oceana Pool, so it's been quite some time since they've had a swim team. And then, of course, as I was mentioning, swim lessons are, they're just a really effective preventative measure for educating folks and how to be safe around the water. And usually, you know, you, it's kind of like learning how to ride a bike, they say, you don't forget how to swim, and it could save your life. The last bullet on this page is, talks about grant-funded programs, and we had close to eight hundred thousand dollars in local, county, state, and federal grant dollars used to offer quality free and reduced childcare this year, and that's programs for Pacifica youth, which supported families so that they could, you know, continue to afford to live in town. The seniors had close to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in intergovernmental, older American Act, federal funding, state and county support and funding, and that's a six percent increase from last year. And also, a smaller amount of money, but we have, for the last six out of seven years, our science, technology, engineering, and mathematics program has received funding, and Pacifica has been the fiscal agent for multiple cities, just our city, and we are very proud of that collaboration, in particular with the Pacifica School District, and also the group that provides the education piece is LearningTech.org. All right, so. The next set of bullets here, I want to continue on with the childcare and say that there are the two things about them that I like to highlight as a curriculum and technology, and they're going to be working on implementing a new improved plan for the summer participants, which would be strengthening our curriculum and offering some more interactive opportunities. In terms of technology, now nearly every state in the nation has launched or is developing what's called a Quality Rating and Improvement System, or QRIS, and that's to improve the quality of early care and education for children. And it's based on three areas: child development and school readiness, teachers and teaching, and program and environment. So our childcare division has received in the last two years almost twenty thousand dollars for assistance in technology, and what we've done with the assistance of our MIS IT staff, we've purchased and installed either new or updated technology at all six of our sites, and that includes desktop computers, laptops, tablets, and internet boosters, and it's all funded through this grant. And the technology's really made it possible for the sites to do things like, the internet is a little spotty when you're remote from the city, so our program, like a lot of programs, are, you know, housed in the internet, so the attendance that they do, it depends on a good internet connection. So that's the difference of one of our site coordinators having to come all the way down to the office and use an extra computer or doing it from the site. So having dependable internet access is really important, and so it's helped to sort of foster improved communication with the city as well. Sometimes, you know, everybody who's in my office full-time or has an email, but you wouldn't know if they'd be able to check it if they're kind of at one of the outposts. So that's helped quite a bit, and the tech access for the children has also been very good, and some of them would not, you know, normally have the opportunity to do these types of things at home. And then also, just want to point out the bottom corner, our play brochures there, and I really like that picture actually, it's one of my favorite covers in recent years, but it is produced and designed in-house, so staff does that. Actually, Beth Phipps, our acting supervisor, does all the work for that, and then we mail it out to everybody, and we've been doing that for the last few years, and we see a lot of uptick in registration when we went from, you know, having it to actually sending it to everybody. So the next one is the Aloney Portola Heritage Trail, which, this is on your work plan, so you guys are all very well aware of this, but for everyone else, this is our, Pacifica's participation in San Mateo County's effort to commemorate the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Portola Expedition, which is the European discovery of the San Francisco Bay, and this includes a National Historic Trail designation at county, state, and federal levels. It is committed to the development of an educational and recreational trail that follows the route of the expedition as closely as possible, and research is going to be done and is being done to understand the region's Native American stories of their homeland, to secure necessary funds, and to inspire public and private support. So we are, I am the representative for Pacifica going to these meetings, along with Councilmember Degree, has been very involved, and we also have a group, sort of a Pacifica Committee, that's going to be continuing the work of laying out the task, direction, and our achievable goals this year, and we're hoping to build momentum in two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, which is one of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary will happen, and there'll be celebration and lots of commemoration, and there's events, and hopefully, well, this will be here after that date, so after that, we want to have things ready for folks to come and visit and do along the trail. The next one, next two actually fall under what council has as other executive priorities for eighteen nineteen. You'll notice that, under your work plan, we also had things that staff in various departments will be working on. So, our department is going to be working on a strategic plan in order to provide a shared vision that inspires and motivates the department's mission. And as mentioned earlier, our seniors have their own strategic plan for two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty, and they actually have a seventeen eighteen tactical plan slash executive summary that is nearly completed this fiscal year. We, and the department, are going to begin work on the eighteen nineteen plan, and hopefully, this will be resulting in individual plans also for our Recreation and Childcare Divisions. And the next piece there is our playground replacement program, and it's nice that I'm sitting next to Director Ocampo, because in coordination with the Public Works Department, we're going to develop a program to address ongoing maintenance and replacement needs for the playgrounds at the city parks and facilities, and this is going to be using a scorecard to inventory our playgrounds and identify the needs and prioritize the work to upgrade, replace, and/or improve them, or all of the above. Also, wanted to talk a little bit about the employee recognition, which was mentioned, we had a couple attendees here tonight, so and this is for city employee recognition, and an effort to sort of foster the goal of strong workforce infrastructure. An employee committee was created a few years ago, about three years ago, and was created to work on establishing employee celebrations, social gatherings, and recognition events. In addition, other things like retention and development was also a focus of this initiative, which we've, need to still get off the ground, but for the past three years, a group of staff represented, and there's at least one per each department, called the Ambassadors of Fund, we've coordinated four annual events, Summer Barbecue, Halloween, holiday events, as well as the annual recognition lunch, which we just did. That was our third year in a row we've done it. And much of the coordination runs through the PBNR Department, and this committee is co-chair by myself and Chief Stidle. And we've also recently realized some cost savings, because we've had our own senior services, food services program do the food for us. So that was, it was not only good, but it was cost-effective. And then the last bullet I have here is staff development, and bringing it back to my department. In the PBNR Department, we are continuing to place a priority on staff development. We want to make conferences, trainings, workshops, classes, all of those available to our employees. If they need it, they need some help in some certain area, they need training, we are trying very hard to encourage them to seek that out and sign up for it, or we sign them up for it. So unless, in the last five years, one of the things that's happened in my department is, we've had about forty-eight percent of the folks that are full-time staff members either leave for another organization or retired, so that's quite a bit of turnover there. We've also had challenges recruiting our part-time staff members, particularly in the childcare and at the pool. So we have been and will be focusing a lot on recruiting, retention, development, and, you know, so you probably, in the city newsletter, I think it goes out, says the positions that are available, I think there's always at least, you know, five or ten in my department with the part-timers. So we're always looking for lifeguards and childcare staff and Recreation folks, so when you have, you know, over a hundred people, that's, there's a lot of turnover there. Okay, so now, the funnest slide of all, hope you guys enjoyed all the pictures. The bottom left is our Recreation Staff dressed as superheroes for our camp in the summer. That's kind of a good one if you look closely, and the technology picture there for the childcare in the middle. So, let's see. So this is the real fun slide. Lorenzo's getting very excited about the numbers up there. This is our budget, and, I don't know, you want to, want to take that one over?
Yes. So, the Parks Department, and thank you, Michael. The Parks Department budget is just a slight decrease from last year. As Mike mentioned, there were some efficiencies that they're taking advantage of, but essentially, the budget is essentially flat, but again, there is a slight decrease there. Their cost recovery is at eighty-two percent, and as you, you know, as we've learned in the past, that Parks has, generates a fair amount of the revenue necessary to support itself, and if you look down in that sort of second category, you'll see that that four point three eight one million in expenses is offset by three point five seven one million in revenues. So Parks is, of that sort of twelve million in department program pie slice that you saw earlier, three point five seven one of that is in there. And so Parks does us proud. Total FTEs for this year, we're projecting twenty-two. Part-time staffers, as you know, is a huge part of Mike's workforce. Hundred and two is projected this year.
So, before you say it.
Yeah.
The number of part-time staff, and this happened last year too, it's usually a snapshot at budget time, and that number is very low. We actually just recently cleaned off a lot of people that were on the books that, believe it or not, some people, when they leave a job, they don't tell us. And we asked them for a letter of resignation over and over, so we had kind of a big grouping of folks that were on our books that if I just wanted to count them, you know, and just before, about a week or so ago, we ended up getting them off the books. And we're still hiring people, if you're checking connect with Pacifica, we're looking for more people too for the summer.
So, that's Department of Parks, Beaches and Recreation's general fund budget. Within Fund Twenty-seven, which is the Roy Davies Trust Fund, these are dollars that were set aside for Parks, Beaches and Recreation to be used to help acquire, build, remodel, improve, support, maintain the equipment, buildings, and grounds, yards, gardens, and landscape areas in various parks, beaches, and recreation areas. These dollars have been with the city since two thousand and six, when this fund was established. At the end of sixteen seventeen, the fund balance within this fund was about three point five million. We're projecting it's going to also be around three point five million when we get to the end of the seventeen eighteen fiscal year. These funds, the principal, can only be used for the purposes specified in the top bullet, and can only be appropriated by a four-fifths council majority vote. And what we propose to do with eighty-five thousand dollars in funds from this three point five million dollar fund is to do an audit of play structures, we're, fi-bar surfacing material, replacing the fi-bar, and also repairing the Frontier Land Park restroom. Both Director Van Ocampo and Michael Perez, Director Perez are here to answer any questions you may have about the necessity for those repairs. But we, we believe that, that these funds are appropriate for the use of these structures and for these repairs, and this is why we're bringing it to you, and so if the budget passes by more than four fifths, this appropriation will be enacted, so to speak. So, you guys want to say anything about the audits or the fi-bar?
I was just going to add that depending on the results of the audit, the council may see other projects that we'll bring forward to you guys pertaining to the various parks that we have here, projects that would improve, remodel, or, you know, beautify the other existing parks that we have and play equipments.
Okay. Sue DeGree.
I have a question about, about the audit. So what exactly are we talking about? Are we talking about a third party? Are we talking about brainstorming within-house of who knows what and?
Yeah, it will be a combination, Councilmember Degree. We're bringing in an expert that will audit our existing play structure, note the deficiencies, which structures needs to be replaced, because they no longer meet the current standards, and in addition to that, like what Director Perez had mentioned, we'll put together the list of the projects that we have, it would be evaluated in, not only by staff, but also the PBNR Commission come up with a list of projects that we can work on.
So that provides us with like liability protection as well as thoroughness?
That's what one of the goals of the audit is to. That's what one of the goals of the audit is to identify where we are deficient and we no longer meet the standards, and which are hazards. Those are the things that we will be noting as part of the audit.
Thank you.
Mike O'Neal?
The fi-bar surfacing material, the school district, I believe, uses the rubberized mats, and they seem to have quite a bit of, you know, lasting quite a bit versus, you know, the wood chips, you know, they're kicked around and they blow around and stuff like that. Has, has the city ever looked into changing it to maybe the rubber mats, and is that consistent? Does that meet the needs of our insurance company?
So we thought about that prior to us coming before you tonight. We looked at that, and that's one of the things that we will, you know, evaluate as part of the audit. But for now, we have existing play structures that does not comply for fall zones, as well as the thickness of the fi-bar. And it's important for us to keep that up while we work on how we're going to remodel the parks that we have. You know, what you don't want is for you not to spend the money right now and expose yourself to the liability in the event that somebody gets hurt.
Oh, no, I understand that, because I know just before I left the school board, we tweaked it every year to get it into compliance, but it reached the point we could not tweak it anymore. So we, we spent like 150, 175,000 on new play structures for all the schools. And I would also encourage to see if, if it's about time for them to do it, if you could get, you know, like quantity discount to buy, you know, there. And then also, I know Pedro Point Firehouse, the PPIA out there has a playground, play structure out there. I mean, I'm just looking to see if you buy, you know, 15, do you get a better price than 10?
Yeah, that's something that we are really looking into as part of our remodeling project. And that's also what's the, that's also part of the recommendation of the auditor as to which place, play equipments can be put together, you know, as part of, you know, a cost-saving measure.
But I would really like to see the, look at the surfacing material for, instead of the wood chip, because the rubber seems to work for the school district, and it just seems like if it's cheaper, maybe it might be more expensive, but the life expectancy's longer, so.
I agree. And we'll look into that.
Okay. No other questions?
Okay, so we'll move on to the next department, which is the Department of Public Works, and Director Ocampo is here to talk to you about all of the activities that the department is currently engaged in, and some of the future things that they'll be engaged in. And I'll turn it over to the director.
Again, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. Van Dominic Ocampo, your Director of Public Works and City Engineer. The Department of Public Works is comprised of four divisions. You have Engineering, Field Services, Wastewater Collection, and Treatment Plant Operations. The mission of the Engineering and Field Services Division is to maintain or repair city infrastructure in an efficient and cost-effective manner, while providing a high level of customer service and a safe work environment for residents, visitors, and city employees. To maintain parks, play fields, and medians throughout the city, and establish programs for the improvement of existing facilities, to clean and maintain facilities along their beach for all or for everybody to enjoy, and to provide city departments with safe and reliable means of transportation, facilities, and equipment use. And among the major tasks that the Engineering Division performs is to plan and design, as well as manage the construction of your capital improvement projects. These are the big projects that the city work on, like the paving project, park rehab, and all those stuffs. The engineering staff also provide review of current development projects. These are the projects that you'll see within private properties, as well as perform field inspections for those. Engineers provide transportation planning and transportation engineering services to the public, as well as the other departments, like the mine department. The Engineering Division also issues the encroachment permits for any and all work within the public right-of-way, as well as do the inspections for those that works. We prepare the application for federal, state, and county grants that are used towards capital improvement projects. And we provide emergency management and technical services during national disasters. We implement the city's storm water pollution prevention program and comply with the municipal regional permit. The engineers also maintain your city mapping system. For our Field Services Division, the major task that they perform is the maintenance and repair of our city infrastructure. These are your local streets, your buildings, the generators that power them in case of power failures, streetlights, your storm drainage, your parks, your trails, recreational facilities, and the beaches. Our Field Services also preserves the natural, I mean, their work also preserves the natural resources of the city and protect wildlife. Case in point, you know, the fencing that was installed by the beach for the snow implover, so one example of it. They are one of the first responders in times of natural disasters and emergencies, such as, you know, flooding, the mudslides, and hazardous material spills, as well as vehicular accidents. Through our Motor Pool Division, the Field Services also maintain the city vehicles and equipment. They all, that, the vehicles also include the fire engines for our fire department. To highlight some of the accomplishments that both Engineering and Field Services was able to accomplish for fiscal year 1718, I do have a, you know, I would say a big list here of accomplishments, and I'm really very proud of them. You know, we can start with our flagship project, which is the first base of the Palmetto Streetscape Project. That has just been completed. We also completed the repair of the rock rebedment, existing rock rebedment at the 500 block of Espinade. This is to, this is to preserve our infrastructure along the street. We also completed the repair of the Milagra Sinkhole and Storm Drainage Repair, which is at the back of the Fire Station, Fire Station 71. If you visit the pier recently, you would notice that there's also a new cap on the concrete railing alongside the pier. That's another project that we did through a grant. We completed the installation of the NSYNC Traffic Adaptive System on Highway One, and the demolition of 528 and 532 Espinade. These were done through grants. I also would like to mention a number of federal and as well as local grants that we were able to acquire, that will help fund our project for the upcoming year. So we have 333,000 in federal grants for the Palmetto Sidewalk Project. This is the installation of a sidewalk along the west side of Palmetto, from West Line all the way to the Dollar Radio Station. The other project is the installation of 100 curb ramps, which will help us comply with ADA requirements throughout the city, and we were able to secure $400,000 of that. Another grant that we were able to secure is 641,000 in O'Bag money, and this is for the rehabilitation of Lindamar Boulevard, as well as Oceanne. You know, that's the upcoming paving project that we are really excited to, to work on. And then 156,000 of county grants for the Cabril School Pedestrian Crossing Improvement Project. This is to create a, a bulb out at the same time with landscaping to treat storm water right in front of Cabril School. And then last but not the least is, we were able to acquire $55,000 in county grant to update our city bicycle and pedestrian plan. I'd like to, you know, show you the picture of what a difference a successful streetscape project can yield. If you look at the picture to your right, that's the before picture of Palmetto Avenue, and the other one is the project as it now looks. That's beautiful, huh? So, what can you expect from our, from our Engineering and Field Services Division for the upcoming year? It will be the completion of the paving project at Lindamar and Oceanne, the citywide curb ramps, the design of the Milagra Creek Asphalt Project. This is the asphalt project near the RB Park that we're working together with the adjacent property owner, and also the Coastal Commission towards the successful design, completion of design and permitting of that project. I did mention the Cabril School Pedestrian Crossing, and then the Hickey, Hickey Boulevard Sidewalk Project is to install sidewalk in front of the Fairmont Shopping Center from Hickey and Gateway all the way to our city limit line. There are a number of municipal building repairs that we need to do, particularly at the planning and the PBNR buildings, as well as the Frontier Land Park restroom roof repair that Mike had mentioned to be funded through Fund 27. The Hazard Tree Removal Project, and I, you know, I forgot to mention that you'll see these lists of projects that we have here included the council priority project, as well as the other executive projects that we, so you'll see them as being familiar. And then we, like I mentioned, you have the Frontier Land Parking Lot Project. This is to maximize the amount of parking spaces that we can achieve at Frontier Land Park. This is for the lower, lower Frontier Land Park. And then you have the Beach Boulevard Promenade Landscaping Project. This is to improve the appearance and functionality of the landscaping that we have here, along Beach Boulevard, from the council chamber all the way to Clarendon. And then last but not least is the Capitol, I mean, the Cattle Hill Property, the city-owned property at the end of Faster Avenue, where we intend to construct a trailhead, as well as a parking lot. Oops, sorry. Continuing on, we have the Beach Boulevard Seawall and Promenade Project. As you are aware, staff has applied for grants, both from the Ocean Protection Council, as well as the Cal Boating and Waterways for the preliminary planning of this project. The Manor Overcrossing Improvement Project, which is coming your way. We are working together with staff from the Transportation Authority towards the, you know, the creation of the draft funding agreement that we will present to council for approval. The Highway One Congestion Relief Study for Alternatives, as you are well aware, we are asking the Transportation Authority for $375,000 to do this project. The Palmetto Sidewalk, I already mentioned that one. The 400 Espinade Infrastructure Preservation Project staff applied for Hazard Mitigation Grant money in order for us to construct a seawall at the 400 Espinade property that the city owned. And the same program, we're able to secure money in the amount of $3 million for the 310 to 330 Espinade infrastructure. The San Pedro Creek and Pacifica State Beach total maximum daily load is the TMTL. That is for the fecal coliform and bacteria infection for San Pedro Creek water, and then, and other parks and recreation projects that Mike had mentioned during his presentation. I would turn this over to Lorenzo, who's our expert.
With regards to... Hang on a second. We have a question from Sue Vidalos.
My question is about the Highway One NSYNC Project. And now that we've turned off the NSYNC Project, are they reevaluating what they're going to do with the NSYNC lights? Or what, what's the next projected step for that?
So, let me explain. So the, the NSYNC Traffic Adaptive System, as we have stated right from the beginning, is not the solution towards peak hour traffic congestion. What it does is it shaves or improves the flow of traffic during the shoulders or the before and after the peak hour, as well as your mid-morning or afternoon, you know, early afternoon traffic. What has happened is that the adaptive system, since it's been turned on, there are very minor, you know, tweaks or adjustments that were made. And what, and what we have observed the previous two years, two weeks, where we got a lot of complaints, was something that we're still trying to investigate. According to Rhythm Engineering, there are no malfunctions for NSYNC, and they're looking at Caltrans, maybe the advanced detector loops that they have that has malfunctioned. Now, part of the reason why NSYNC was turned off is primarily because of the paving project that you have right now. With the paving project came digouts or repairs, base repairs on lanes, which damaged the advanced loops. That's the reason why we have to put the highway traffic on recall. That's Caltrans. That's part of it. We asked Caltrans today to tell us until when that's going to be the situation, and they did say until August 1st, until the time that, you know, that the repaving has occurred. At that point, we will enable NSYNC back, and when we enable NSYNC back, during the peak hour traffic, it will be just bypassed. It would go on the detection mode, so it doesn't really have any impact on the peak hour traffic, because it's really not gonna, it's not for that particular reason.
Thank you.
So, the, the budget for Public Works for 2018-19, council members, if you can join me on packet page 169, I wanted to just give you a little detail behind that 4.2 million dollar figure that we have for Public Works this year. Now, at the top of packet page 169, you will see Public Works' base budget is about 3.7 million. And there are a number of one-time projects that we've factored into Public Works' budget for 1819. I just wanted you to be aware of that. We presented this to you, oh, way back in early May. But I, again, I just wanted to remind you that Public Works has, there are projects built into their budget beyond their base budget. And so, the other, and so as you look at Public Works' budget, their expenditure budget with last year compared to this year, you'll see a bump, and that bump is mostly related to these one-time projects. As we move down the cost recovery, again, you'll see the, the change in the expenditure total, but the general fund department revenue total, we've changed our philosophy on the revenue total calculation for Public Works. Public Works is supported by, not only their sort of base revenues, but they're also supported by an excess of $600,000 in transfers in. And this is because Public Works' staff does work for other funds. So the gas tax fund, Streets Fund, and so Van's staff does work for these other funds. As a result of that work, the general fund essentially charges those other funds for that service. And so the way we define that charge and that, the dollars coming in from that charge, is we call it transfers in. And so this year, we thought it was only fair that, that Van be credited on the general fund revenue, not only with his base revenues, but the transfers in as well. So you'll see a big jump there from 244 to 890. And so going forward, we'll make sure that that's reflected that way. But I just wanted you to be aware of it in case you thought that Public Works hit a, hit a geyser or something while they were working on the streets. FTEs staying at 26 and a half. So if there are no further questions on the Public Works sort of Field Services side, we will move to the Public Works Wastewater Treatment we will move to the Public Works wastewater treatment operation. I always liked this presentation because I look forward to hearing Van or Louis tell us what the acronym ATAD means.
Thank you, Lorenzo. So for wastewater, wastewater is comprised of the wastewater treatment plant operation as well as the wastewater collection system. I'll begin with the treatment plant operation. So the mission statement for the treatment plant operation is to maintain and operate the Calera Creek Water Recycling Plant, making sure that it's in compliance with the regulatory permits from the State Water Resources Control Board, Bay Area Air Quality, the EPA, as well as the County Environmental Health Department. They're also there to preserve and prolong the life of the treatment plant and its infrastructures, to operate and maintain the treatment plant's biopiltration and odor system, as well as the ultraviolet disinfection system, to maintain and monitor the Calera Creek wetlands, which is a known habitat for endangered species. So, features of the wastewater treatment plant is that the treatment plant treats an average of 3 to 4 million gallons per day, that's the average. You know, during storms, we can accommodate up to 20 to 21 MGDs, but that's not sustained. You know, at a certain point, it has to start lowering down with regards to the flow. We process an average of 380 dry tons of biosolids, and about 300 of these 380 tons are reused for land application. We make use of ultraviolet light in regards to disinfecting, for disinfection, which is the final stage in the treatment of the wastewater before it gets discharged into the Calera Creek. One of the treatment plant, and this is what Lorenzo's looking forward to, is my, one of the features of the treatment plant is it's one of the first plant to use the autothermal thermophilic aerobic digestion technology, or ATAD, which destroys the volatile solids and increase the watering of sludge, resulting in high-quality biosolids and reduce the volume. So when you reduce the volume, then you, it's a less cost for us. So for the wastewater collection division, their mission statement is to maintain, clean and repair 104 miles of wastewater collection pipeline. Okay? They operate and maintain seven pump stations, five of which is sewer and two of them, which is the one on Lindamar, and the answer one are storm drains. There's a staff at wastewater collection that participates in the review of current development projects. These are the private development projects so that they can impose the right condition of approval in order for new developments can be accommodated by our collection as well as the plan. They inspect restaurants and commercial food establishments to ensure that fat, oil and grease are kept out of the collection system. They inspect new sewer lateral installations and replacement of existing sewer laterals. Highlights, to highlight some of the accomplishments for fiscal year 2017 and 2018, the collection system cleared over 90 miles of sewer main lines. They inspected eight miles of sewer main using their closed-circuit TV. They treated 11,000 or close to 12,000 linear feet of sewer main and replaced 2,300 linear feet of damaged sewer main line. They completed 65 repairs of mainlines and manholes, 255 private sewer lateral installations, and issued 252 sewer lateral compliance certificates. We remain in compliance with state and federal regulations because of these efforts, and we have completed over 300 food service establishment inspections. So what are the various capital improvements projects that were done? And I'm really very proud of this list, and this list has really grown this current fiscal year. So, projects that have been completed are the Crespie Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. This is the main line that we replaced from the north parking lot there by Taco Bell all the way to the north end of the Pacifica State Beach. The Heathcliff Drive Sewer Repair Project. The Crespie and Highway One Sewer Main Line Project, that's the one that you approved to change order today. And that's one project that we really are in a rush to complete in order for us not to delay the paving of Highway One. And the design of the Lindamar Pump Station, there are other pump station upgrades that were done at the Brighton Pump Station now named David Davis Answer Pump Station, mostly related to the pump and also the generators that are in these particular pumps. The Lindamar Pump Station has a roof repair that was also done this year. And then we have the replacement of process pumps and blowers for fiscal year 1718. In addition to that, for this particular year of 2017-2018, we have allotted $100,000 for the lateral grant assistance program, which usually is $50,000. So for this year, we have increased that. So, what can the council and the public expect for the upcoming year? It would be the completion of the wet weather equalization basin that is currently over 50% complete. Okay? The Pedro Point Sewer Main Rehabilitation that is currently under construction. The Lindamar Pump Station upgrade, the collection system capacity improvement projects, which is at Terranova and Odstad. The ATAD modification project phase two, as well as the lower Calera Creek weed clearance and maintenance work that we're going to do within the, within Calera Creek, which is the discharge point for the treatment plant. In addition to that, we are also going to complete the Calera Creek Water Recycling Plant Roof Improvement Project. We have a leak right now at the treatment plant, as well as an upgrade to the SCADA system for the plant.
So the budget for the wastewater treatment facility, we're going to, again, the enterprise is composed of two funds. Fund 18, which is for operations, and Fund 34, which supports the capital improvements. So we'll start with Fund 18. The plant operations, and for the most part, the budget is flat. There are some changes in the debt service where we've got a winding down of the 2012 sewer loan and installment, but we also have a sort of a ramping up of payments for the 2017 revenue bonds. And so, we actually structured the debt to have some of it kick in as other debt winds At the lower part of the screen, we, again, we have the expenditures of $13.936 million, and that's what the expectation is for 2018-19. We're also anticipating revenues of $14.6 million over those amount, over that amount for next year. It's a recovery rate of 104 or 105%. That extra 5% will flow to the fund balance for Fund 18 and will eventually be transferred to Fund 34 to support more capital replacement projects. Total staffing remains the same at 28 and 1/2. Fund 34 is the next fund in the enterprise, and again, this is the, this is the fund that supports all of the capital projects. And so right now, we sort of gave you a sort of a three-tiered snapshot of the Fund 34 expenditures. We had adopted a budget of $22.281 million. Right now, we're projected not to spend all of those dollars. We're about $19.1 million, and that number is also variable. We'll know for sure here in about a month and a half how much of that, how much of that $22.281 we actually will spend. For 2018-19, based on the plans for Public Works, they anticipate that they'll, they'll have capital projects totaling $14.345 million next, next year. As we move down to the lower part of the slide, we can see the expenditures again, and then we'll see the revenues. A lot of the activity for this year and probably for, and for next year as well, will be supported by the proceeds from the 2017 sewer bond. We are still determining how much of those proceeds will be applied to the $14.35 for next year and how much fund balance will be applied. You can also see the pension obligation bond repayment that's coming back to Fund 34 from the general fund. If you recall, about four years ago, probably five years ago, the general fund essentially borrowed money from Fund 34 for the repayment of pension obligation bond, and with the stipulation that the general fund would repay Fund 34. And so the first installment of that repayment occurred this year at $171,000. Next year, it goes down to $147,000. The following year, it jumps up to about $900,000. Yes, sir?
So, so where is the revenue coming from for 2018-19?
That'll be a combination of the proceeds from the 2017 sewer bond, as soon as I determine, and as soon as I and Van determine what's left, and whatever void there is, we'll have, we'll use the fund balance.
Okay. Is the, the total amount, the 24.5, 24.5 million, and it's a matter of what's left over from that?
Exactly, exactly. And again, we're gauging to see where we are at the end of 1718. And as you can see, the wet weather equalization basin, which is priority one, we scheduled 6.3, 16.3. We think it's going to be about 13.2, but we'll see. And whatever's not spent this year will be routed toward that 9.340 million, which you see in 2018-19. And these dollars are also available for other capital projects outside of the wastewater, wet weather equalization basin, but, but right now, the focus is the EQ basin. And so again, as soon as the numbers stop moving around, I'll be able to tell you how we're going to fund this. But right now, we've got a few things in flux.
So what, what do you estimate that the, the fund balance will be in both funds?
Well, last year...
Maybe combine them?
Combine them...
Or whatever you want to do, but yeah.
When we close the, when we close the 16-17 fiscal year, the combined fund balance was about 25 million, between 18 and 34.
And that did not include the, the proceeds from the sewer bond, is that right?
I don't believe so, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't believe so. So, we're, so again, I'm confident that there's, there's funds there to fund it. I just can't tell you whether it's 9 million, whether it's 8 million, whether it's 13 million. I can't tell you that right now, but I will by the time we finalize this budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so, if there are no questions regarding Public Works, both on the wastewater side and the field services side, we'll move to Fund 35. And Fund 35 is our parking enterprise fund. And so this accounts for all the revenues and expenses associated with the beach parking program, which started back in August 2013, controls the beach, again, all of the parking lots that have beach access. Over the last two fiscal years, our fund revenues have not kept pace with the fund's expenses. Our beach parking revenues were down from budgeted amounts by 22% in 1617, and right now, we're projecting they'll be down by 25% in 1718. The fund has, as a result, the fund has experienced a reduction in the fund balance, and we anticipate that a further reduction in the fund balance will occur at the end of this fiscal year.
Su, do you agree?
A question on the, the beach parking. I believe you said that was because of the construction going on, so you can't use the available beach parking, so we're not getting revenue? Is that part of why we're losing revenue?
That's part of it, yes.
Is there more than that besides that?
I, I think that's the main thing. That's the main issue. Director Ocampo?
That, that is correct. If you would recall during my presentation, I talked about the sewer main line that we did through the parking lot that occupied half of it for quite some time, as well as the southern parking lot near the pump station. We have a variety of projects there too that occupied that one, which means that there are few revenue that came in for those projects, because of those projects.
And I forget when we estimated all those things would be over and we'll be back to normal?
We identified that there is a need for an increase, and, you know, that would be coming up following the presentation that Assistant City Manager Heinz is doing right now.
Well, I mean, all the construction that's impeding getting funds, that'll, that'll be over within a year, right?
Right.
Yeah, but, so the two projects that I mentioned earlier were already complete, you know, so, but during this current fiscal year, it did have an impact for a period of six months to seven months.
Thank you.
So, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit more about your questions as we move forward. So, we're proposing at this point an increase in the four-hour parking fees from four, $5, sorry, to $7. And we're also proposing an increase in the annual parking pass from $67 to $72. And it's our estimate that the additional revenue driven by these two increases will help mitigate some of these losses that we've, we've incurred in the last two years. Additionally, we've had increasing levels of parking infractions down at the state beach, and clearly, the level of parking citation fee is not curtailing certain behaviors. So, we are also proposing to increase the citation fee from $43 to $50 in an attempt to have folks obey the parking rules down there.
Do you really think that's going to do anything?
We gotta try. We gotta try. I'm sorry, I...
Yeah. If you really want to have some effect on people, you know, increase it to 250 or something like that.
Wow.
Might have other parking problems.
I'll be, yeah, I'll, I'll mention that to Chief Stidle tomorrow and see how he reacts.
I'm sure that a $7 increase is just...
Not going to do it?
It's not going to have any effect at all.
Okay, okay. Then we will, we will take your opinions under consideration. We'll be bringing the fee schedule. By the way, both of, all of these items will appear on the fee schedule, and so we can have further discussion at that point in time. But based on our estimates, we believe that these increases will generate enough revenue to allow us to take care of the fund balance that the, will probably drop into the negative at the end of this year. And as you can see, at the end of 2018, I'm projecting a $9.3,000 or a $9,9300 deficit. And with the additional revenues, we can address the deficit and address the capital projects that Director Ocampo needs to accomplish at the, at the state beach. And he can speak more. I think there's something, restroom doors or showers.
So we do have a number of projects that we would like to do within the Pacifica State Beach parking lot. For one, it's time for, I mean, replacement of... Beach parking lot. For one, it's time for, I mean, replacement of a couple of the doors that we have there for restrooms. They are stainless steel doors, that's why they're a little bit expensive. In addition of that is the, the machines. You know, we have, we are replacing the machines one year at a time, and we replaced one already. We have one already in order, and we're hoping to replace the third one because they're exposed to the elements, and so they rush really quick. And then, the third project that we're considering is, you know, the slurry ceiling of the parking lot itself, you know, because that's one way to preserve or prolong the life of the pavement.
I'm wondering.
Sue DeGruy.
So, we're talking about state things, so it'd be the state beach, state pier. So, I did ask Senator Hill's associate to look into whether there was anything that the state could do to help us. But the more I think about it, I would like to see the city actually, if council would consider having the city approach the senator and the assemblyman because we're a, we're a coastal asset for the state, and I think it's a state beach and a state, state pier. I think they ought to at least consider assisting us in some ways, making sure that our beach and our pier, you know, have, have dignity so that we can continue to do well there and provide for county and state income. I don't think we should just accept that they say, oh, we can't help you.
Okay. Sue Vidalas.
So, basically, the charges, we break even. But because we have rangers, they do cleaning and other items that we would have had other staff doing, so it's not as bad as it actually looks on paper. Is that correct?
We're, we're getting, we're getting quite a offering of services for the, for the dollars that come in. It's, it's quite a deal.
Okay.
And, and you're right. As, as long as we're breaking even, or having, or creating enough revenue that allows us to provide these services and also allows Director Ocampo to make all of those capital replacement that he has to make, not only the machines, but there's also the, the paving, there's the striping. I mean, that's, that's, that's a pretty expensive process. And this fund, and the thing to keep in mind, this fund is an enterprise fund. It is a business unto itself. It has to support itself, and it, and essentially, it can charge anything it can, needs to charge to support itself. And so, what we try to do is get these fees to a point where it can support itself.
Thank you.
Can we charge the boat?
Huh?
Can we charge the boat out there for, I mean, permanent resident?
Boat?
Yeah.
Is it still there?
It's underwater.
Yeah.
Rental fee?
Yeah.
But it's parked for quite a while.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. But who do we charge? That's, yeah. So, so that's kind of where we are. And in Slide Thirty-Three, just gives you a slight, slight detail to kind of give you an idea of what the revenues look like and what the expenditures look like. You will notice in Fund Seventeen, Eighteen, I have programmed a tentative contribution from Fund Eighteen, which is the wastewater treatment enterprise fund, as sort of an offset for some of the, the impacts on revenues that have occurred this year. And we moved down to the expenditure. When I say we got a good deal, we've got personnel, which include how many rangers, Van?
Three rangers.
Three rangers, and they take care of all of those things that you, Councilmember Vidalas mentioned. We've got internal service charges, and these are charges for vehicle replacement and various other things, supplies. We've got citation processing costs, which are levied on us by, not somewhat levied, but charged by the county. There's supplies, and there's, and there's right now about twenty-five thousand dollars built in for the things that Director Ocampo mentioned that we can get done in eighteen, nineteen. That capital outlay and machinery line is an ongoing expense, so there'll be another twenty-five or thirty thousand next year for nineteen twenty. And as long as he has to keep up the assets of this fund, they'll, they'll always be in a, in amount there. So, do we have any questions? Okay. Very good, very good. Gentlemen, thank you. So, the, the next topic, if, Council, if you can join me on packet page one seventy-four. So, the next topic is the consolidation of the disaster accounting fund and the excess ERAF fund. Now, what we've, what we've determined is that we have a lot of disaster-related expenditures built into ERAF. These expenditures used to be built into the disaster accounting fund. However, because of ERAF and the fact that it's unrestricted in what we can do with it, and also our efforts to prevent exacerbating the deficit in the disaster accounting fund, we ended up setting up Fund Thirty, which basically allowed us to track all of the ERAF dollars and spend the ERAF dollars. Since a lot of the, pretty much all of the ERAF balance is for public works or disaster-related projects, we propose combining the two funds, and we'll still be able to track ERAF revenues as they flow into Fund Thirty-Eight. But what we'd like to do is combine Fund Thirty into Fund Thirty-Eight. And this is why I brought you to the all-fund summary, just so you can kind of see how this is going to work. So, we'll combine Fund Thirty into Fund Thirty-Eight. So, not only will we take the revenue from Fund Thirty and put it in Thirty-Eight, but we will also take those projects which have been encumbered for Public Works to go along with that revenue so that deficit in Thirty-Eight won't disappear immediately. But what we intend to do is, over time, as ERAF dollars come in, we would like to pay down the advance that the General Fund currently has, has made to Fund Thirty-Eight. And let me back up, let me back up. When we show a deficit in any of our funds, that deficit is propped up by the General Fund. So, when we look at the General Fund financial statements, you will see an amount owed from Fund Thirty-Eight. And if you look at the financial statements of Fund Thirty-Eight, you will see an amount borrowed from the General Fund. And so, what we propose to do is, over time, take that amount that's borrowed from the General Fund, use those dollars to pay off that amount. And so, the General Fund will end up getting more cash. And then, we're going to take that extra cash in the General Fund and basically cycle it back to Fund Thirty-Eight to keep supporting more capital projects. And so, that's what we hope to do over the next couple of years with the ERAF allotments that, or the ERAF receipts that we receive over the next couple of years. Hopefully, we can do it in a couple of years. And again, we're talking the ERAF receipts that have not been pre-allocated for the non-governmental organizations and various other things. And so, that's the way the cycle will run. But going forward, our proposal is, all of these projects, we will now track in one fund, as opposed to splitting them out over two funds.
Mike O'Neil.
Okay. So, given how much our ERAF is, it, pre-allocated, we have, what, maybe a hundred thousand every year that we've pre-allocated?
We have roughly eighty-eight thousand, I believe, for the non-governmental organizations, and, and I, but-
So, given-
That's it, okay.
Given last year, the ERAF, according to this, was one point eight, right?
Yes, right.
Point eight. So, we're going to actually have the disaster, no, Fund Thirty-Eight, should theory be paid off in two years?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's the intent.
Okay. And then, do we have any, the infamous four million dollars, is there any of that left after?
After, yeah, after we take care of Fund Thirty-Eight, the, the remainder of the infamous four million dollars is, still resides in Fund Twenty-Two.
Which is that?
That's what I have to determine. That's why you see in, for Fund Twenty-Two, the, the estimated ending balance for this year is to be determined, because I've got to go in and ferret out all of those construction projects and figure out what was supported by revenue, and to see if there was anything there that added to the deficit. Last year, I believe we were sitting at about a million. Million-five, maybe.
You know, the, the one issue I kind of have with this, I mean, it makes perfect sense accounting-wise, and I support it. However, is in conversations with Jackie Spears office, he had said that, you know, in order to fix the seawall, we're basically like a roof, right? We're patching the roof all the time now.
Right.
What we need to do is actually get a whole new roof. Okay. And he said that we would probably be required to put up some matching funds. So, if the ERAF funds are put in the disaster fund, would that, we would not want to draw that down again to deficit, correct?
Right, right. We'd want to, we'd want to keep a cash balance there, because not only do we need a cash balance for matching, but we need a cash balance as sort of a cash flow tool, because we, we have a lot of work that we do where we have to do the work and we have to pay for it, and then we have to wait for reimbursement. And so, in order to not drain the cash of the other funds, keeping a cash balance there, so when Director Ocampo has to spend six hundred thousand dollars before he can get that back, we have the six hundred thousand dollars. And it's not going to be, you know, a detriment to us because it's there. And that's what's, that was the beauty of that sort of second step in the process, that once the General Fund received its dollars, that the General Fund can then send the money back to Fund Thirty-Eight.
Okay, but then, kind of trying to get for the goal of, you know, like Foster City has a measure on the ballot to rebuild their levees up eight feet tall.
I know it well, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so, if we were to take and try to get the whole new roof, we would probably have to find, do some sort of assessment district with, yeah, to structure it in such a way that maybe West Sharp Park pays more than Park Pacifica because they're impacted more, or whatever, right?
Well, I, I don't know about the equity arrangement, but it's, but we're going to have to figure out a, a mechanism to allow us to have the capital to do what needs to be done.
This is the concern I have, only concern I have for this, and I mean, is the, when are we going to get the new roof? You know what I mean? It's just, we needed a whole new seawall there.
Right.
When is that going to happen? But we, we keep, you know, unfortunately, all our disasters have been on a credit card, and we're just paying it off now with a fund that could stop next year.
That is correct, yes.
I'll chime in, Councilmember O'Neil. One of the major council prioritized projects this year relates to the Beach Boulevard seawall. It's the, Director Ocampo mentioned, the grants that we're applying for related to the design of the seawall and figuring out what it would then cost, an updated cost estimate. The other part of that project is continuing to explore, and we've had numerous meetings with the Army Corps, but continuing to explore what are all the financing options and funding options in different potential sources, Army Corps fund, other state funds, local matching funds, et cetera, to actually finance that expensive project. So, I think, of course, that's the, that's the work plan scope for this next year is trying to figure that out.
But most of that money will require local matching funds, correct? Or a lot of it?
There, there would definitely be a, a, a local piece needed for that. I can't, I can't say how much that-
Right, you don't know, yeah. But there probably will be a requirement for local matching funds and stuff. So, I'm just kind of, you know, mentioning that, the one concern I have about this is the fact that we're not building any sort of matching fund for any potential new roof, new seawall, whatever. And, I mean, what you're saying from an accounting point of view makes perfect sense. I can understand you're just paying off the credit card, and that's kind of getting our fiscal house in order. So, I commend you for coming up with the idea.
Well, I can't take all the credit, City Manager Woodhouse. You know, he, he deserves a fair amount of credit for this one, too.
So, what happens after, you know, 2020, when presumably you've paid off the, the negative balance in the disaster accounting fund, and, you know, you've left some kind of positive balance that you can work with?
Mm-hmm.
Where are the ERAF funds going to go then, after that's completed?
Perhaps the, the second part of the, the infamous four million dollar issue.
Ah, yeah.
Fund Twenty-Two.
Yeah.
Fund Twenty-Two, yes. Because that receivable is still out there, and has been out there since 2003. And it's gaining interest, and it's accruing interest every year.
Is that actually a bond debt? You said it's accruing interest?
It's, it's a receivable. And when it was set up back in 2003, there was an interest rate attached to it.
So, we borrowed from ourselves and are charging an interest rate to that money?
Yes.
What's the interest rate?
I can't remember offhand.
I think it's three percent.
Um, two percent annually.
Two percent.
Well, do we have to charge an interest rate?
I'm just following the, the council's directive at that time.
Well, it's a different council.
I know.
So, do we have to charge an interest rate on a fund?
That, in my experience, that's fairly normal.
It's fairly normal? But this is specific, though, so.
It's eleven o'clock at night.
Is it really?
It's ten.
It's like midnight.
Yeah, okay. Can we lower the interest rate if it's three percent?
My, my guess is that, that's usually like the LAIF rate, which is the Local Agency Investment Fund. Oh, I'm sorry. That's generally the LAIF rate, which is the Local Agency Investment Fund rate. That's usually what is sort of the standard rate that cities use to charge themselves interest when they loan themselves money.
Two thousand three, that three percent, but now the LAIF rate is somewhere around point five, point three, right? Correct?
I do not know.
And I, well-
I can find out, but I don't, I don't know if I can. But, but presumably, yeah, it was probably the LAIF rate.
So, we would actually save ourselves money if we were to lower the interest rate to the current market?
Right. You would.
Well, we're not really saving ourselves money. We're just shuffling it around.
Well, you know, it seems to me if we can do it, we, you know.
That's certainly something that the staff can look into and bring it back.
Yes. All right. Any other questions on that particular strategy? If there are no questions, I'd like to talk a little bit more about packet page one seventy-four, and just, and again, this may be, you know, I may have mentioned some of this already, but I just wanted to make sure you're not surprised by some of the documents that I'll bring before you for final enactment. We talked about excess ERAF in Fund Thirty-Eight. We mentioned the reason for the to-be-determined for, at the, at Fund Twenty-Two, the general capital improvement. I wanted to bring your attention to the debt service fund, Fund Forty. And one of the documents that I will be bringing you this year-
this year is the request to transfer roughly one point nine million dollars out of Fund Forty. Fund Forty is our debt service fund and it is mainly a way station for all of the other funds to pay into so Fund Forty can pay our debt. Our debt schedules are static. When we closed twenty sixteen seventeen, Fund Forty had a balance of two million dollars. And that two million, um, grew as a result of us not making sure that the debt service payments that entered into Fund Forty actually tied with what was owed in our, as far as our debt service was concerned. And so what we've done is we've gone back, looked at where the two million dollars came from, and we are transferring those dollars back to the contributing funds. One point one seven nine million of that two was contributed by the general fund. And so we're using those dollars as they come back to the general fund for these one-time expenditures that you've seen, um, in the proposed eighteen nineteen budget. A certain amount goes back to Fund Nine and a certain amount goes back to Fund Ten as well. But I wanted to make sure, in case you're looking at last year's balance and you're saying, whoa, 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 what happened here? Uh, that's what happened. And so what I'll do is long and, and, um, and my staff, we will make sure that, um, we make sure that this fund reflects our current debt schedule so we don't end up with that balance in there again. It's part of my, part of my year four plan here at the City of Pacifica. So every year I have to do something, something. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was, um, I made a FOPA on Fund Thirty Five. Uh, the dollars that I put there were actually where I project we're going to be at the end of this year and I did not reflect where I thought we were gonna be projected in twenty oh, in twenty nineteen. So I'll correct that next time I bring this back to you. And so those are sort of all of the things I wanted to mention about the other funds. Um, and if there are no further questions, um, can we go to packet page one seventy-five and we'll talk a little bit about the capital budget? And so, um, maybe Director Ocampo can join me or Louis or Ray Don Guinness, um, in case there are any questions about the capital budget. Um, as you can see, the capital budget is broken down by the different funds and the different projects that are being funded by those funds. And you can see, just for instance, um, through the general fund, we've got tree removal and maintenance. As Van mentioned earlier, or Director Ocampo mentioned earlier, the Cattle Hill property. Um, we've got a number of ADA projects, the IT infrastructure replacement where we're looking at, um, upgrading our network. Um, we've got sidewalk projects at Hickey and, um, we've got various municipal building repairs. And so I say this to just make sure that you understand all of the different projects that are being proposed uh, this year, uh, in the capital budget. And if you have any questions about those projects, um, we stand ready.
Uh, Mike?
Mike?
Hello?
I, I just wanted to be sure, now, the bond, the more you talked about on one seventy-four, um, bond, the bond one, I forget the number, debt service fund.
Yeah, the debt service fund, Fund Forty, yes.
Now, you've looked at all the covenants and restrictions on the actual contracts from the bonds?
Yeah.
And you've priced them out to be sure that we?
We'll be, I, we'll be fine because those covenants can also be covered by the balances in the, in the funds.
Okay.
So as long as the general fund remains healthy, or as long as Fund Nine remains healthy, or Fund Ten remains healthy, we'll be fine.
Okay, cause I, I know you got our credit rating raised and I wanna keep it up there, so.
Yes, yes.
You know, and I'd also just like to clarify for the public and kinda for the council is, this is the cupboard where we found money and now the cupboard is bare, correct? So this is one-time money
Yes.
balanced this year's budget?
Right, right.
Okay, so next year, this won't be here to balance the budget?
Exactly.
Okay, so we'll have to look at other alternatives?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I just wonder.
Yeah, I'll, so as we, as we pass the eighteen nineteen budget, um, the work, the work then begins because then we have the nineteen twenty budget. And you've all seen the five-year forecast. You all know that, uh, the PERS dollars are just going to go up another six hundred thousand dollars in the general fund. Um, yeah, that's when the work begins.
So that, am I correct in that point that it's nine hundred this year go up another six hundred to one and a half?
It's, um, for the general fund, it says roughly, uh, between six and seven hundred and it'll go up another six to seven hundred next year.
So it'll be about one point two?
Yeah.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it, um, it's just, again, the, the work begins then. Um, so do we have?
Sue DeGruy.
Yes.
So on page one seventy-six, I think?
Okay.
Um, do we get any help from the school district regarding a pedestrian crossing for a school?
No.
Uh, no.
Have you ever discussed it with them?
Uh, the answer is no. And the reason for that is these improvements are within the street right of way. Uh, we have gone into a, um, partnership with them with the previous grant, uh, and they also supplied us with, uh, you know, letters of support for, uh, grant opportunities. But again, this work is totally within the ci- the city right of way. That's the reason why.
Thanks.
Um, Van, uh, for the Cattle Hill, um, trailhead and parking lot, uh, got fifty thousand dollars estimate, uh, what does that cover? Does, is that everything or, or just the design or what?
Um, we've, we preliminarily estimated a, um, twenty-five hundred square foot area and, um, you know, we will see what we can come up with beginning from the, um, uh, you know, the environmental face of it, look at what it is and see what it can cover. And then we will look for grant opportunities towards the construction.
Okay.
How many park, how many parking spaces would five hundred square feet be?
That would be, uh, that, no, twenty-five hundred. That would be around, uh, four, uh, four to five, uh, with a handicap space.
Four or five or forty?
Four to five, four to five with one being a handicap space, right? Because you have to consider that when you build this, uh, you know, parking, uh, parking lots, you know, it's not like just the stalls. You have to make sure that there's the alleyway coming in and out for access and turning around of vehicles. Then you have the, uh, striping and, and all this stuff.
So, um, additional funding will be required beyond the fifty thousand dollars to actually build the parking lot?
That is correct. And we'll look for grants that could also, uh, pay for that.
But, uh, one thing that should come out of the fifty thousand dollars is roughly how much the rest of it will be, right?
Yeah, it depends on like what I said, you know, there's that environmental face, making sure that everything is clear because we don't know what people encounter during that. And then you go into, um, the preliminary design that includes how much grading is involved and all of this.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Um, all right.
And, um, that concludes our presentation for this evening.
Good job.
Nice work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Okay.
Get a break.
Um. Okay, we're taking a five-minute break for.
Okay.
I thought we weren't.
Well, this next thing.
It shouldn't take too long.
Uh, SFO Roundtable is working towards. Some of the, um, you know, information in the report provides status and background of efforts the city has been doing related to aircraft noise, uh, most recently, uh, in January, adopting a set of position statements that, that convey Pacifica's positions and sending those out in letters to the FAA and, uh, and encouraging, uh, you know, roundtable focus and that kind of approach. Um, another consideration for the council when thinking about forming an ad hoc subcommittee is, uh, two items related to staff resources and funding impacts. And so to consider limited staff resources available to support such a committee's work. And, uh, it's anticipated that an ad hoc subcommittee would consist of less than a quorum of the council, just two members, would be limited in scope and have a limited duration of less than twelve months and therefore it would not be considered a legislative body under the Brown Act. And therefore, uh, staff resources would not be needed regarding meeting agendas and notices, et cetera. And, um, concerning the committee's work, um, itself, it would be to, that the, uh, that the research that the committee might do is self-directed by the committee members or that it relies on or utilizes the technical resources that the SFO Roundtable technical, uh, assistance provides to that group. Um, an important point related to the consideration in order to avoid Brown Act violations is that it's recommended that one of the ad hoc subcommittee members be Councilmember DeGruy who serves currently as the appointee to the SFO Roundtable so that that prevents a, um, if it, if it were two additional council members in, in addition to Councilmember DeGruy and there were times when there was communication between the Roundtable and an ad hoc committee, you could have three council members, uh, uh, you know, communicating on that. And we, we would wanna avoid that. Um, and then finally, for the scope of work for the ad hoc subcommittee, uh, the, the kind of, I think, and, and Councilmember O'Neil can, um, can, uh, you know, add to this, but I think the original intent was to initially go and approach the Brisbane City Council to see if they're interested in partnering on our shared mutual interests related to aircraft noise. So a first step for the ad hoc committee would be to, you know, solicit their interest in meeting and working together, uh, in a more focused way on, on that issue. Um, and then, uh, furthermore, you know, depending on, on their response, uh, defining what, over the next twelve months, um, you know, the, the meeting schedules would be or the, or the specifics that would be discussed. I think I'll stop there. Uh, can answer any questions. Oh, I did wanna mention, uh, you know, a couple of alternative actions that are cited in the report is, uh, before the council were to consider forming an ad hoc committee to actually, uh, have two council, direct two council members, uh, just to go approach Brisbane and ask about their interests first before the council considers, uh, forming an actual ad hoc subcommittee. Um, and the other alternative is to, to not form an ad hoc subcommittee at the ti- at this time and continue to work through the SFO Roundtable and separately advocate the city's positions as we have been doing. So I'll stop there and, uh, answer any, any questions related to the report and turn it over for the council's deliberation.
Mike O'Neil.
Um, um, Michelle and I had a conversation on the phone and I was wondering if you can share with the rest of the council that conversation. And Kevin and I also had a conversation about this. Your contact with the City of Brisbane?
Yes. Um, I was talking to Councilmember O'Neil about, I got a call, uh, just the end of last week from the Brisbane City Attorney who had been given direction from his council along the same lines of what you directed me to do. He came to pretty much the same conclusion that I did and, um, wanted to reach out and see if, you know, there had been any, um, you know, a- additional updates. I did tell him what was gonna be on the council agenda tonight, um, and he mentioned that, um, he, you know, he hadn't heard about that, but he did know that from his council's perspective, that this is something that is, um, come up, uh, to a higher priority for their council.
So basically, the way I, when I proposed this, what I kind of, you know, and obviously this is subject to everybody's input, but what I was hoping to have was right now you have the Roundtable and there's like twenty people yelling at the FAA, we want this fixed. With this, you'd have a couple of council members from Brisbane, Pacifica, meeting with the FAA individually, trying to build a relationship, get a sympathetic ear and see if you could, if we can do something because according to Michelle's report, I know a couple of council meetings ago, that's what successfully worked down in, um, Southern California. And I'm just looking at this as a second prong to try to get some relief from the airplane noise for the citizens, that's all.
Yeah, and just to elaborate a little bit more, what I had discussed, um, in my staff report of a couple of meetings ago, what they had done in, just to reiterate, just for your memory, um, what they had done in Southern California is they had formed smaller sort of subgroups of the Roundtable to focus on issues that, less issues that were more, more focused on communities that were more similar in what their concerns and problems were with aircraft noise. I, I, and that is what worked successfully in Southern California to hone in on exactly what the issues are facing your community, Pacifica, as well as perhaps a neighboring community that is experienced, experiencing similar or compatible issues that you could then join forces and have, um, perhaps more conversation with legislators or, you know, perhaps even coordinate more with, um, coordinate more with the FAA itself.
I mean, I think it's indicative that we sent a, a letter, we didn't even get a response for the letter, so we sent a second letter and had to count with the Congresswoman to try to get a response to the first letter. So, you know, I'm just looking to see, is there some way we can try to build a relationship with the FAA to benefit Pacifica?
I have a question. When you said they, the Roundtables broke into smaller groups, does that mean that the Roundtable dissolved itself in smaller groups?
No, actually, and I'm glad that you brought that up, because I forgot to say that these subgroups actually worked in coordination with the Roundtable in terms of accessing the information and the resources that you get from the Roundtable, such as a technical, you know, advisory assistance. So they, they worked in coordination with the Roundtable, which is why, as I was telling the city manager, I think it is important that you have an, an ad hoc committee member who is also, you know, yourself, a committee member on the Roundtable, because there most likely will be coordination with the Roundtable.
So do you happen to know if all Roundtables have as part of their code that they don't push for anything that moves noise from one community to another community?
You know, I did discuss that with the attorney from Southern California, who had worked with Southern California Roundtables, and I don't think that there is a written rule. I think that is an issue that she felt required the focusing of efforts among communities that had very, had similar issues, or could focus more on a, an isolated issue or a single issue, because that is what seemed to be able to get enough momentum and support from legislators and, you know, receptiveness from the FAA to make progress. I don't know how much progress they received, but I, they made, but I do know that, that they felt that that was a productive way for them to proceed.
So, just so everybody realizes that, I, I have no problem with creating relationships, unless, like I said, in our Roundtable, that is one of the prerequisites, that you don't work to push noise to another, but that doesn't mean you can't work together to have the FAA behave itself and go back to what they've already messed up. Noises here in Pacifica deal with departures, so like Brisbane would be one, Daly City, I would think, would be another one, but we also, we also are affected by arrivals, and so that would be different cities. And then I'm learning from our Valley people, and I heard it just yesterday, that the backlash from the planes on the ground before they get up, so that would be right there in Milbrae, actually comes to Pacifica rather violently.
Yep.
So that would be another, so those three don't necessarily work together from departure or backlash.
The backlash that you're talking about?
Backwash.
Backwash, sorry. What you mean is you're starting, you're starting the airplane to get ready to go, go down the road.
So it's pollution?
No, it's sounds, it's noise.
It's noise.
Big, 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 big time noise, yeah. So, I mean, just, I'm not trying to discourage what, what we're talking about here, but I'm just trying to say that it's very.
At my house, yeah.
Yeah, especially some areas, it's the way our geography is.
Yeah.
And, and it didn't, this option or, or fork that the council may be taking isn't going to solve all of the issues.
Correct.
I think that's, that's sort of the decision that the council's going to have to be considering at some point, you know, when the ad hoc committee brings back a report back to the full council, because the, the idea is the Roundtable currently addresses all of the issues, or attempts to.
Right.
And what's happening is there's an inability to really focus on just one issue that affects one community or two communities, and so it kind of gets lost in the shuffle.
I, I want to disagree with you there. So, in actuality, the Roundtable is focused on, on all of the issues around SFO, and what happens is, yes, we're interested in departures, but where those departures can go is limited greatly by where the arrivals are coming in. It's also limited by where the departures from Oakland Airport go.
Mm-hmm.
And so it, you know, the airspace is very complex. I, I think it's close to, to maxed out in terms of where you can go. The one place that is open potentially is out over the ocean. And at the last technical meeting of the Roundtable, there was some hope that, that we might be able to get a little bit more space out over the ocean. That is limited by military airspace, which is, you know, all over the country, just a few miles offshore. So, you know, I don't think that you can expect the FAA to make decisions about departures in a vacuum without considering arrivals, other departures, and so on.
No, I agree. It, it is very complex.
Right, so, I mean, I, I think everybody wants a solution, and I think I brought it out before, that noise right at the moment is not a congressional mandate for a priority, whereas at one time it used to be. So FAA has to obey their mandates, and there isn't a mandate about, so trying to get Congress across the nation to adopt noise, to put it into a mandate, would be one, one way, but would they ever do it? The other thing is that there doesn't, you're seeing that maybe the airport at SFO is maxed out, don't we wish? They keep adding new flight paths to already existing airlines, and they're bringing in new airlines with their three to five air pa- flight paths. There's no, there's no demand that that be, be stopped. There doesn't seem to be a capacity, so, but that might be something that, the Roundtable itself, but individuals like Brisbane and Pacifica, and I would say Daly City, would probably be comfortable talking about departures. Will we, will all of Pacifica benefit from that? I, I think, being realistic, no, but a good percentage, yes.
A stick in particular.
I'm not advocating that the FAA do anything in a vacuum, or the FAA endanger anybody, but I just sit there and look, they're not returning the letters, it's, nothing has happened in how many years? And to try, you know, to try something different and new, and go in there with two, two, three cities, that's fine if you, Brisbane, Daly City, Half Moon Bay, I think Half Moon Bay was having some of the same issues, and I just don't see why. It doesn't hurt to ask, it doesn't hurt to try, and just trying a second, another method to do it, that's all. I mean, we can all sit here and say, "Oh, this won't work, this won't work, this won't work, this won't work." We'll try.
Well, I don't think we're saying it's not going to work. We're, we're trying to make sure that the public knows what we're talking about. We don't want to give false hope that by talking to Brisbane, Half Moon Bay, and Daly City, that all of Pacifica is going to receive a remedy, even if we get one. So I don't see any problem with two or three or four communities, or five or six, talking together and hoping to get somewhere. I, I have no problem with that at all.
Well, I think we kind of need to, for lack of a better word, kind of limit the number, because then you're just becoming a second Roundtable, and that's pointless.
Oh, no.
But I think two or three, and, you know, I mean, if we benefit anybody in Pacifica, I think it's a win for Pacifica. And I agree with, you know, not everybody's going to want whatever comes out, but that's what, the way compromise works, the law works.
I have one card from a member of the public, so I think we'll let him speak, and then next will be Deirdre. So Tiger Jazz?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, I am Tiger Jazz Charles Big Stick of Pacifica. I'm just listening to you all and having thoughts, kind of echoing some of what I hear, but I feel like maybe a different phrasing hopefully is helpful. First of all, if Southern California models an approach that we haven't yet tried, it seems worth it to try it if it's a slightly different approach, since after spending so much time, trying so much, if we haven't tried everything yet, if what hasn't, if what we've tried hasn't worked yet, we have to try everything, including apparently an approach that's a little different. I heard the term "two-pronged approach" used, the idea of coming at it from two different directions. And more than anything, what I'm hearing about this approach is that it's more personal. Speaking for myself, whenever I'm reaching out to someone, and you all know that I serve on the Board of Directors of the Resource Center, and sometimes a part of that is asking for donations. And when I ask for donations, and by the way, also my work as a food clerk, there are times when I'm asking for donations also. What I find personally is that when I'm asking for something, I want to make eye contact with the person. I want to be able to look into their eye and speak from my heart and give them the idea of what I'm saying. It's easy if you're not looking at the person, you're just on the phone, or even a letter, to brush them off, whereas if you're talking to somebody who's physically present, that changes things. And the smaller group approach, it would seem, would allow the flexibility of maybe having those opportunities that a larger Roundtable might not necessarily offer. So, first of all, if the approach hasn't been tried yet, it seems like for something that's aggravating so many people, we should try something that hasn't been tried yet. And after that, the reason it sounds to me like a good idea is because by having that personal touch, maybe when a human being is talking to a human being who has the potential to talk to somebody else, that's much more effective than somebody reading a letter. And we don't know what happens at the point in time in which we read that letter, if it makes it to them, if it made it to the right person, if it was written in such a way that it, it triggers that person's sensibility. When you talk to someone one-on-one, then you can kind of align with where they're at. A letter doesn't necessarily have that. Thank you.
Okay, Sue Beckmeyer.
I think that this ad hoc committee should happen. I think that a new approach is needed, and I think some of the issues that Sue was outlining just now are, should be an area that we focus on, such as the seemingly endless addition of flight paths, patterns, additional planes. There was a 60-day period during which we could file a lawsuit. Well, it's a moving target, as far as I can tell. The, the conditions that were going on three years ago, when we were allowed to file a lawsuit, are not the same conditions that we're experiencing today, or that we will be experiencing in three months, six months, a year from now. So I think the issue of providing the feedback to our electeds who do have some input over what the FAA should be worried about, and elevating the conversation to a different place, I think is needed, and I think the attention from those electeds would be a little bit sharper if there's a recognition that there's another entity that's forming to try to address this from a different angle. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Deirdre Martin.
Mike, do you have an interest on, in being on the ad hoc committee?
Sure, I'd volunteer.
So, yeah, my, my, my concern would be that it's not a city-supported, not, not, you know, we're not supported, but I mean, it's not a city-sanctioned or supported committee, right? It's not, how, what's the legal term, Michelle?
I'm not sure what.
Well, we don't have, we don't have the, the staff capacity to actually have a supported committee.
Oh, so it would be an ad hoc committee, not a Brown Act committee?
Correct, okay, thank you. So, so for, I mean, my, my only concern is like just making sure, I have a tendency to just kind of like project manage the heck out of things, and I'd be sending out all sorts of reminders and, and doing all that, and other city council members in other cities don't necessarily need that from me. So if you already have good relationships with those people, you, you've been doing this longer than I have, then I would, I'd fully support that if you would be okay with that. I think it's a, a good idea in theory, and I don't, I, I'm not against it.
No, I unders- I understand your concern and stuff. I would imagine it's going to be pretty minimal staff support. I mean, maybe the initial letter just to Brisbane, and, you know, Sue's suggestion, Daly City, and one of the council members in Half Moon Bay kind of mentioned it too. So maybe, you know, the initial letter to each of them, just saying, you know, "We voted to have an ad hoc committee, and we're inviting you to become part of it and set some date and time for them to decide if they want to move forward, so it's on their agenda. And then we set up a time for us to meet, and we talk about what our goals are, what we want to do, and then we contact the FAA and set up a schedule and, and set up a meeting for them, and we go from there." And I certainly would be more than happy to report out, you know, if there's no meeting, there's really nothing to report, but if there is a meeting, talk about it and mention what it is.
Do that, Lois.
I'd like to just go forward and move that we go ahead with the ad hoc committee, naming Sue Degree and Mike O'Neill to serve on that committee. Do you want, do you have any objection?
And, and, and I'm assuming that motion would include that it'd be an ad hoc committee of limited purpose and duration?
It's an ad hoc subcommittee. Yes.
But to specify the purpose.
Part two.
Oh, okay.
And...
And the purpose is, well, it says to appoint two council members, and I already said that, so.
Right, and, and the purpose...
The purpose is to meet with other cities to determine the, the benefits we could have for each other in the airport noise issues.
Duration of...
Less than 12 months.
Okay.
So this will be brought back, I'm sure it will be brought back before 12 months, but at a minimum it will be brought back at 12 months to, most likely, to dissolve the subcommittee and, and perhaps create a new one, but it would only be...
Or, or extended if it looks like we're making progress, yeah.
One suggestion regarding the purpose would be, you know, to form, form the committee to bring, you know, inquire with the other cities if they want to participate, and then to take steps within that 12-month period to, you know, advocate and reach out for solutions related to the, the, you know, ish, the mutual interests of the cities, and in kind of, and we have our position statements that kind of convey what our interests are, so.
Not...
Much, much better said.
Do that within a 12-month period.
Okay.
So, so I have, I have some, are you, are you going to start a motion or something?
Well, I was just asking if.
Needs to be a second, I'll second.
Well, I was asking if everybody understood what Sue's motion is, then.
I do, but I would like it clarified.
Okay.
Can I just, can we just hear it again?
Yeah. Why don't, why don't you, the city attorney?
So as I, as I understand it, the motion is to create an ad hoc subcommittee comprised of councilmember Mike O'Neill and Sue Degree for the purpose, for a limited duration of less than 12 months, for the purpose of working with other local communities, primarily Brisbane or Daly City or possibly Half Moon Bay, to see if there are common interests among the cities to work together to try to address aircraft noise issues.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I just, I just have one concern. I don't know how far your connection is with the rest of the city is. I have no problem with that, but yes, I do have a problem is that to the community here, because we're not dealing with cities that suffer from backlash, what did you call it?
Backwash.
Backwash, that a significant area of Pacifica may feel that we're eliminating them or.
Sue, I think the main concern of most of Pacifica at this point is noise, and I think you just have to go down the list and try to see what you can do about noise, and then your, your backwash and.
I, I have no problem, as I said, with the first part. My, I'm just saying, you, we might start hearing something and we can deal with that, we can deal with that.
We just deal with it because we can only, it's only, I think you have to stay focused on one issue to get it going.
Well, can I make a comment?
Yep.
I would just like to propose that this ad hoc, this ad hoc committee goes into it with sort of a unified vision of, of the purpose that we just stated. And I just, does that make sense? Because I, it sounds like there might be some push and pull, but I just want to make sure that when we're talking with other communities, that we have the same messaging, we have each other.
So we're basically doing departures.
Well, I think you, you have the experience to, to know that that's probably a good start, and I would defer to you.
Well, the three communities you just mentioned are all.
That was not part of the motion.
Departures.
To, to be that specific with the, the role of the ad hoc subcommittee.
Noise.
The role of the ad hoc subcommittee is to glean interest from other neighboring communities to work towards common goals to address aircraft noise issues.
I would offer that, you know, one of the, the, the position statement document is sort of the unifying statement that the council has adopted about the aircraft.
Thank you.
Noise issues, or aircraft issues, because it's, it's more than, than noise, that we already all have direction to, you know, advocate.
So now, so getting past all that, so I would assume that council would want us to report back on a regular basis.
Yeah, I said I would be happy to do that.
Technically, we need a second on that motion.
I think, I seconded it.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
For discussion, yeah. You know, I have no problem doing a report, you know, it might be as simple as we haven't had a meeting in the last two weeks, but, you know, letting people know what's going on. I have no problem with that.
So is there something wrong with saying we will report back every once a month, the first meeting of every month, so that we're consistently accountable or some such thing?
Do we need to get that detailed?
Do we do council communications, at least?
Yeah, council communications, if there's no meeting, you say, didn't have any meeting this month.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not just out there in limbo.
You know, I think maybe we should be sure we have five Ts in the report and two dotted Is, you know.
I just think we start something, we should be responding back on a regular basis.
So Mike and Sue, that's kind of what I'm talking about when I asked to go into these meetings with, with a unified vision.
Yeah.
So that we're not having kind of these types of.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Enough. We have four minutes until 11 o'clock.
Okay. So call, call the question?
No.
Call the vote.
That's always said, calling the question is voting.
Call the vote.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero.
Have we already?
Hey, John, that's the first meeting that we didn't have to do an extension.
Yes.
Isn't it? We didn't have to do.
It was 9:30 last time.
And we're adjourned.
If you call for the question, you really have to vote on this.
Yeah, well, guess what? Somebody did it in my meeting the other night, and it really upset me because the discussion was still going on very heartily.
Well, I just wondered because it was 11.